The Board meeting of the Board of Education for July 28, 2020 to order. For tonight's meeting, any item that will be voted on has been posted as required by state law. This meeting is being streamed live on Channel 28 and will be replayed throughout the next two weeks. Please check the district website for replay times. And this meeting is also being live streamed on our PPS TV services website. Welcome to our viewing audience. If you are just tuning in, we have just had an update from staff on the plans for fall reentry. And we know how much families are anxious to hear about what school will look like for students next year. So you can check out that meeting also on Channel 28. And tonight, we're very excited because we get to vote on the 2020 bond package and hear an initial update on the 2021 board goals. We're going to begin, however, with the consent agenda. And so, members, are there any items that you would like to pull? We will discuss those at the end of the meeting and vote on them then. So are there any items that we need to pull from the consent agenda tonight?
Chair Lowry, I have two items that I don't, we don't need to pull them. Can I just state my questions? And they don't even have to be answered tonight, just put them in the record?
That sounds great, yeah.
Okay.
Go ahead and get the motion on the table, Director Brim Edwards, and then you can ask those questions.
So moved. So moved.
Second, the consent agenda.
So the two questions I'd like to have just answer for the record, later in the meeting or put them in the record is, on the transportation services to district employees, we have a contract with the Safe Transportation. And my question is, how is the training that is part of our professional conduct? When you have unsupervised interaction between adults and students, how is that training delivered to the contractors? So that's one. And then the second question is, what are the metrics for success for Equity, for the Center for Equity and Inclusion? For the contract? And both of them, I'm supportive of both contracts. I'd just like the answers to that. And then one last thing, the Answorth Office Expansion, I think should just be clarified that it's not actually expanding the office, but there are offices for special ed teachers to have meetings versus expansion of an administration office. So I'm happy to have the questions answered at the beginning and for next meeting, whatever works for staff.
Okay, so let's, can we have staff answer those via email? Director Brim Edwards, is that acceptable? Okay, so if staff could get those to Director Brim Edwards via email, that would be lovely. Ms. Bradshaw, were there any changes to the consent agenda? I know we moved and seconded pretty quickly there.
Hi, there, nope, there were no changes to the consent agenda.
Then we don't have to redo the motion. Is there any further board discussion on the consent agenda?
Yeah, I've got a question. In reference to the minutes, it doesn't look like my vote was recorded as per board policy in any of the last two board meetings.
Hi, Nathaniel. That is because it's unofficial and the new program we have doesn't have a place to put it. So the overviews aren't complete yet. But when the overviews are complete, they will state your vote for each of the items. So it'll be in the discussion, it'll show your vote.
Right, but is that not also recorded in the minutes that we are to approve?
Roseanne, are you able to answer that? I'm not sure if they need to do that.
So we do not approve the meeting overviews, but we can talk to, talk to board leadership to figure out how we can work through this so that we can note your vote.
I think we can take that and come back, Nathaniel, with some further thoughts and a solution on that.
Yep.
All right. Thank you for raising that student representative shoe. Any other discussion on the consent agenda? Board will now vote on Resolutions 6147 through 6149 and the consent agenda. All in favor, please indicate by saying yes.
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 All proposed, please indicate by saying no. Are there any abstentions? The consent agenda is approved by a vote of seven to zero with student representative shoe voting.
Abstain for the reason of, yeah.
All right, thank you, Nathaniel. We now turn to student and public comment. And before we begin, I'd like to review our guidelines for comment. The Board thanks the community for taking the time to attend this meeting and provide your testimonies. Public input informs our work, and we look forward to hearing your thoughts, reflections, and concerns. And our responsibility as a board is to actively listen. Board members and the superintendent will not respond to questions during public comment, but our board office will follow up on board-related issues raised during public testimony. Public input emphasizes respect and consideration of others, and we request that complaints about individual employees be directed to the superintendent's office as a personnel matter. If you have additional materials or items you would like to provide to the board or superintendent, we ask that you email them to publiccomment@pps.net. Please make sure that tonight, when you begin your comment, you clearly state your name and spell your last name. You will have three minutes to speak, and you will hear a sound at the three-minute mark, which means that it is time for you to conclude your comments. Ms. Bradshaw, who do we have signed up for student or public comment tonight?
And we have Mitchell Kenny as our student signed up.
All right, Mr. Kenny.
Okay, hello. My name is Mitchell Kenny, that's K-E-N-N-Y, and I am a senior at Benson High School. And when I heard about the proposed four-class semester for reopening in the fall, I realized there were some problems for AP students such as myself. And I think my situation really illustrates those problems. So normally, students in these classes would spend most of the class learning all the new material and then have time to study before the test in class, with class time dedicated to the subject from the first day of school to the day of the test. However, under the four-class semester, an AP student would only have the class for one semester, and they would lose the continuity of studying that subject throughout. So, for example, if a student had the class in the first semester, they would learn all the material in that semester, and then they would take about a three-and-a-half-month break from the end of the first semester to the test day, where there would be no allotted class time for the subject. And in the worst case, if a student had an AP class in the second semester, they would only have that three-and-a-half months to fully prepare for the test, which is completely unfair to the student. So in my schedule, I had five AP classes planned for my senior year. But because I have five under the four-class semester, even with optimal scheduling, I would have four classes to fully learn in the first semester and then not touch for three-and-a-half months. And then I would have to fully learn another class in that three-and-a-half months. And this is the best-case scenario where my first semester is all AP classes. So options to help AP students have already been mentioned, but in cases like mine with at least five AP classes, I think those options might look quite different. The district might ask me to self-study a class or even drop them to fit the schedule at Benson specifically. So in any case, no matter what the district would be asking, I think it's ridiculous. And the problems with AP would be solved by reverting back to the eight-class semester. Well, I know my situation is an extreme example, but there are hundreds, if not thousands, of other AP students in the district who will face the same problems I will because of the four-class semester. So I felt the need to come here and speak against it. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your testimony tonight. We were just talking about that in the last session. I think you heard part of that as well. Ms. Bradshaw, do we have any other public comment tonight?
Yes, Andrew Konstantinescu.
Hi, my name is Andrew Konstantinescu. My last name is spelled C-O-N-S-T-A-N-T-I-N-E-S-C-U. This is to Superintendent Guerrero and Portland Public Schools Board of Directors. We, the teachers and staff of James Madison High School, enthusiastically applaud your decision to initiate a process to change the names of schools throughout the district. We encourage you to stand behind that process and remain committed to naming our schools in ways that our diverse group of students can be proud of. As you know, schools like James Madison High School have been honoring slave owners or leaders who have contributed to the racial injustice that permeates in our country's culture. By now, you hopefully know that James Madison, for example, enslaved over 100 people, and he legalized the racist, dehumanizing, and exploitative institution of slavery by placing it squarely into the heart of our nation's constitution. This, along with other acts that dehumanized and targeted people of color, is hopefully well-known to you by now. Naming our school after him is a very real problem. Therefore, we implore you to place our school on a fast track to the same change process rather than delay for multiple years. We appreciate the importance of deliberation. We wholeheartedly agree that students, alumni, community members, parents, staff, and other stakeholders must be involved in the path to renaming. However, we feel the utmost urgency for multiple reasons. Number one, our school rebuild is on pace to be completed at the end of the 2020-2021 school year. As part of the redesign, the building will be branded with a school name, logo, and a mascot. To best use taxpayer funds in this process, it makes sense to be proactive in renaming the school instead of waiting until the rebuild process is finished. Number two, our students have been engaged in a campaign to rename our school for over a year and a half already. They have researched James Madison, polled the student body, made fact sheets, written school newspaper articles, spoken to community groups, created petitions, engaged with alumni, met with administrators, and even given testimony to the PPS School Board. A lot of work has gone into this from our student body, and it only shows that they are committed to making this happen and have been for over a year. Number three, because of the groundwork that has already been started, we believe that a thoughtful process for renaming our school can successfully and respectfully be completed within a year. We've already seen a similar process happen within our own cluster when Rose City Elementary merged with Gregory Heights Middle School in 2007 to become Roseway Heights. As our school is one of Oregon's most diverse, we call on you to please make our school a part of your case study rather than put our efforts at the back of the line. Show the Portland community that you truly do stand behind your commitment to support BIPOC students by adding Madison to this initial plan. We stand ready to work with our students, parents, alumni, and community partners. This is only one piece in a broader, deeper effort we are committed to that will help make our school more just and more equitable. But it is an important piece we are excited to commit to right now and not at some ambiguous later date. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Bradshaw, do we have any further public comment?
Yes, we have Tim Knizer.
Welcome, Tim.
Yeah. So my name is Tim Knizer, K-N-I-S-E-R. I live in the Madison High School neighborhood. My daughter attended Roseway Heights and now attends Madison High School. And I'm a teacher at Madison as well. Many Portland public school building names and mascots came about as a result of individual and institutional racism. Madison High School is one example. But I'm not here to discuss if the name should be changed. Of course it should be changed. I'm here to discuss when it should be changed. School buildings like ours that are being modernized and set to open in 2021 need to be prioritized. Names and images are being added to new construction now. Every month that passes means time, money, and energy spent and wasted on new work and materials. And more time, more energy, more money spent a few months later to replace it. The Madison High School remodel is on an urgent timeline. Renaming it should also be on one-two. We can take this simple, concrete step to dismantle institutional racism right now, and we should. Renaming our school cannot become a long and distracting process for our district because there is so much more that we need to be working on to create a just and equitable education for all of our students. Please insist that a new name is chosen for our school in a timely manner and by the people who are impacted most immediately. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Bradshaw, do we have further public comment?
Amina Ali.
Welcome. It looks like Amina is still muted. Ms. Bradshaw, do you unmute her?
Sorry, I am tech challenged.
Oh, no, it's totally okay.
My name is Amina Ali, and my last name is A-L-I. I have one son who is a graduate of Madison, and I have two children who still attend Madison. And I really want to start this by thanking the School Board and the Superintendent for all of the work, all of the craziness that's gone on. I can't even begin to imagine the decisions that are having to be made right now. But I have to say that when I heard that the School Board was acknowledging the need for changes in names of the schools, I was thrilled. And then when I heard that it would take three to five years for that change, I was immediately deflated. Now is the time. It just makes sense. When we look at a new building and new construction, it just makes sense that this be the time. Hard-working teachers and students have been working on this literally for years now. They're ready to say to anyone right now in these incredibly divisive times that anti-racism has to wait three to five years seems completely backward to me. Southeast Portland needs a win. We need a win. Southeast Portland, it's not just about Madison as a high school and the amazingly diverse population that goes there. It's also about a community in Southeast Portland that is suffering. We have been suffering for a long time. We do not get resources, as you well know. We don't get resources when it comes to things like sidewalks and traffic lights and new business. We need something to look forward to. These kids that well-know the history of Wilson and Madison, they know. Don't make them walk into a brand-new building with an antiquated racist name behind it. It's called the Modernization Project. And as we think about modernization, I think we need to think about philosophically what that means. It's not just about new tiles and pretty computer labs. It's about what the school means. What are those kids going to carry on their gear and on their academic transcripts? There needs to be a name that's inspiring. There needs to be a name not of a racist, not of somebody who abused and kidnapped and tortured children. This needs to happen now. Please consider putting Madison with Wilson as a test case for a name change. Southeast Portland deserves it. Madison community deserves it, and definitely those, thank you.
I'm one of those kids. Oh, wait.
Thank you. Ms. Bradshaw, is there further public comment?
Yes. Adam Daniel?
Ms. Bradshaw, I don't see Mr. Daniel on the list of participants. Oh, maybe he's one of the callers. Are you there? Sure, can we move on to the next public comment and try to connect with him?
Yes. Mia Callaway?
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, great. Actually, Adam Daniel is in the call. I'm not sure why her connection isn't working, but if we can, she's called in.
Yes, I'm so sorry I misgendered her. We will resolve the tech issue after you are done speaking, if that's okay.
Yes, okay, great. I was just making sure that she would get her time to speak. Okay, perfect. Hi, everyone, I'm Mia Callaway. That's, my last name is spelled C-A-L-L-O-W-A-Y. I'm a campaign lead for Youth Pass with Youth Environmental Justice Alliance and a 2020 Parkrose High School graduate. I'm speaking this evening on behalf of the Get Moving Measure, more specifically, the $9 million annual investment for all youth in the metro region to receive Youth Pass. As a transit-dependent student with a history of long commutes, I've seen my share of absences and detentions. Students without transportation options can miss as many as 11 extra days a year of class. Youth Pass can minimize these absences and help improve academic performance. Having accessible public transit available has proven to decrease chronic school absences issues for students. This measure also expands resources to the many low-income and BIPOC families in the East County as well as those within Portland Public Districts whose needs are met by Youth Pass. This measure canon will change young lives like mine who are dependent on transit and deserve a safer and more reliable way to get around. Safer meaning cleaner, safer meaning acknowledging the needs of young Black, Indigenous, and youth of color, and safer meaning transit-dependent youth communities are being more funded transit-wise. Companies and corporations like Nike, we know in the past, have come out against the measure due to an employee tax. There may be some people on this board with conflicting perceptions on this measure due to aspects like these, and I urge you as members of the Board of Education to only think in the interest of Portland students and not personal business interests. Programs like Youth Pass help leaders and representatives like yourself tell the youth of Portland that they care about them and their futures. It also, in turn, creates a future of loyal riders choosing public transit over cars, which will alleviate congestion and mitigate climate change. And a free regional Youth Pass creates a universal, region-wide benefit available to over 200,000 youth as they become the next wave of public transportation riders, many of them being students. Youth advocates are here in hopes of your full support on the Youth Pass portion of the measure and the numerous other equity wins like safer routes to school and other safe transit benefits expanded to predominantly communities of color, which is a huge need for Portland. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Ms. Daniel, are you available to speak at this time? Ms. Bradshaw, have you been in touch with Ms. Daniel so we can see what the tech issue might be here?
I have not received anything from her. I'm not sure which column user it should be.
It's like we have column user four. It's the only column user we have right now that I can see.
I just unmuted them.
Hi, Daniel?
Yes, you can hear me now?
Yes, thank you for your patience with us tonight.
Fantastic, okay. Hello, everyone. My name is Adam Daniel. My pronouns are she and her, and I'm a campaign lead from Yaja, and I went to David's High School. I wanted to address the Youth Pass as a part of the $9 million annual investment, a part of the Get Moving Measure. I want to acknowledge that Youth Pass is an extremely important program because we can easily see how youth's access to transit contributes to climate justice as well as social justice. Youth will have the right to mobility, and we know that marginalized communities, youth and students, suffer the most from these transportation disparities. So this program will provide equity and allow for all youth to get free transit. Although PPS has bus passes, this will benefit the district far more because your students will not only get it during the school year, but also in the summer and provide more for your regional community. This program is extremely important for your students suffering economic disparities due to COVID-19. This would show your support and help out these families more. I want to remind you all that youth have worked really hard to make this transit program accessible to our entire region. I want to remind you to act in the interest of serving your students, the youth in your community, and marginalized communities beyond. We have dealt with corporations feeling against this measure in how the tax will work, but this measure truly acts in the benefit of the broader community for working-class people and for the entire community beyond. We ask that you do not alter your personal interests with the interests of the community you serve. This matters to your student body, the people of your city, the youth. They want your support as PPS for the Youth Pass program on the Get Moving Measure as well as a part to create safer communities, better routes to schools, and other advances towards achieving equity. As we are in these current times, it is very crucial that you all, as the Portland Public Schools District, take action to achieve this equity. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Ms. Bradshaw, do we have any further public comment?
One last person signed up for this, Vanda Hunter.
Hello, everyone. My name is Vanda Hunter. That is H-U-N-T-E-R. My pronouns are she/her. I work for Oregon APSME Council 75. And as a coalition partner of Yaja, I am speaking on behalf of Alejandra Gallegos, who cannot be here today but wishes they could. I will now read the testimony that they prepared. My name is Alejandra Gallegos. That last name is G-A-L-L-E-G-O-S. My pronouns are they/them. I am the Youth Environmental Justice Alliance organizer at Opal. I am here today to give you all an update on some very exciting news outside of all the quarantine and federal messes popping up. On July 16th, we were able to get the entire Metro Council to unanimously pass the Get Moving Transportation Measure that would include a $9 million annual investment in Youth Pass. This investment in Youth Pass will provide all youth 18 and under in the entire metro region year-round, regardless of income and school enrollment status, to have access to this amazing program that PPS already partially enjoys. This is over 20 years of work led by Black and Brown youth, predominantly women, insisting there should be no barriers in being able to get to and from school. This is a huge deal for Portland. Removing a barrier as simple as transportation has been proven to mitigate dropout rates and improve graduation rates in cities where transit is free for students, and we all know Oregon needs it. You all have the opportunity right now to correct Portland's intentionally racist history by supporting working-class and BIPOC youth today and fully supporting the Youth Pass portion of this measure going forward. This measure also includes multiple other equity solutions such as safe routes to school, veteran safer buses, and corridor improvements in historically under-invested in communities of color. We urge you today to place the needs of students over that of personal business interests. Thank you.
Thank you, and thanks to all of those who gave comment. And if you have something specific that you want to follow up with the Board or Board Office, please connect with our Board Manager, Roseanne Powell. Nathaniel, would you like to provide us with your report this evening?
Yes, I would, thank you. All right, so this is my first report as student representative, which is both very exciting and daunting. I hope you all will be able to forgive me for any slip-ups herein. So let's begin. As it's summer, it's difficult to report on student affairs overall, so I will mostly be focusing on the District Student Council, the DSC, for this report. I would also like to thank the DSC for their instrumental role in planning this report. I am most grateful for your help. And I would like to note that while the DSC was very much involved, they do not necessarily endorse everything that's about to come out of my mouth. So moving on along, we have committees. We are looking to appoint at least one DSC representative from each, oh, sorry, one DSC representative to each board committee and advisory group. At the moment, we, as a council, have a representative from approximately half of district high schools. Hopefully, as we add more reps this fall, we can ensure that each rep gets a committee and each committee gets a rep. And a quick plug, if there are any high school students watching who are interested in joining the DSC, particularly from alternative schools and from larger schools such as Franklin and Lincoln, please feel free to get in touch with me. It's N-S-H-U-E@pps.net. Now, DSC and student representative policy. As many of you know, we are currently at the beginning of the process to amend 1.20.012P, which is the student representative in DSC. which is the student representative and DSC governing policy. We are planning to map out and subsequently implement a community engagement strategy in the near future, and we tentatively plan to send the policy to the policy committee at some point in fall. Of course, all of that is subject to change based on the highly volatile environment in which we currently find ourselves. Now, originally, I had planned to include a section on reopening. I was going to discuss the need for greater clarity surrounding the district's reopening plan. No, no, I no longer feel that is necessary, given the recent guidance from the governor and our discussion. It is, it now seems pretty clear what we're going to be doing in fall. Which leaves me with one final topic. While this wouldn't ordinarily be within the purview of this report, we, as a council, have decided that we cannot fail to mention an issue of this magnitude. We would like to signal our support to the protesters, to all and particularly the students who have been involved in the protest, sorry, who have been involved in the Black Lives Matter protests and, for that matter, movement more generally. We thank you for your activism and your bravery. We would also like to condemn the federal response to the protests in our city, the likes of which are uncalled for and have no place in a democratic republic. And that concludes my first student representative report. Thank you.
That deserves a round of applause from your board of colleagues for getting through your first one with such weight and clarity of the values of our district. So thank you, Representative.
But also for bringing up a topic that adults are just uncomfortable with. So I really appreciate your showing up that way. Thank you.
I know we all look forward to continuing working with you through this next school year. Superintendent Guerrero, you get to follow that, so good luck.
I was just gonna say that. For our student representative's first report, he's making it a hard act to follow, but I'll do my best. I'll just repeat what he said. If I slip up, please forgive me. So good evening, directors, chair, to those watching the live stream or joining us here live. Thank you for being here this evening. I'm just gonna touch on a few topics. One, because we talked about it earlier and for the larger public's benefit. If we go to the next slide, I want to start the evening by looking back to some of the themes we covered earlier in the work session that we just wrapped up prior to beginning this meeting. Folks probably mentioned or noticed that earlier today, we made an announcement to families and staff that we will begin the upcoming school year online. We made this determination after reviewing the best available guidance from health officials and following today's announcement by Governor Brown regarding new health metrics and standards that we should consider when opening schools. I also want to recognize and realize that for families, this news might provide some assurance they were looking for, but it also likely presents challenges to many others. So as we're nearing the end of the summer, I said this earlier, I think we all hope to be in a different reality with this pandemic. And for those of us in public ed, we always prefer to have our students face-to-face, engaged in classroom-based learning, but under the current conditions, it just would be unsafe to have significant numbers of students and adults back on campus at this time. So our comprehensive distance learning model, which directors and public heard a little bit about earlier, is intended to be different from the student learning experience of this past spring. Our goal is to be prepared to engage students and provide them with a more robust learning experience. Students will be observing a regular weekly schedule. There will be regular interaction with teachers. Grades will be taken as well as attendance. So although this will be a more atypical or unusual start to the school year, we are working and collaborating with our school leaders and educators to really sort of create a new kind of opportunity and also establish support structures that better ensure Black, Native, and students of color have access to culturally-specific supports. This includes continued and strengthened partnership with culturally-specific, community-based partners, continuing to braid our racial equity and social justice strategies into our instructional core and developing supports that begin to address mental health impacts of these times. I want to thank parents who lent their voice to a couple of recent focus groups about what would be helpful in supporting them as we contemplate the new school year. I want to invite families and the broader public to stay on top of our posting information. We'll be doing that on a regular basis at PPS.net, Fall 2020. So please stay in tune on our homepage. We're also going to be reaching out to families through other means. So these are tough times. We're going to do our best to arise to them. I will continue to count on our educators and staff to be creative and compassionate as we serve our critically-important mission. So I know that the next update will dive into much more detail about the specific experience that our students and teachers will have. Next slide, we committed to our directors. We want to recognize this also was an unusual budget development season this past spring. There's a little bit of movement in this area, and we just want to call it out here. We know that our resource planning would be different for most years, and information from the state is also going to be iterating. So we're waiting for the next state budget forecast. We're beginning to hear a few things from the Ways and Means co-chairs revenue proposal. First of all, there's a possibility that the student investment account funding will actually be cut by two-thirds. Earlier forecasts showed that funding would be cut by one-third pre-COVID. So we're paying close attention to that. On the good news side, we understand that Measure 98 funding just might be fully funded for the coming year. And we're also hearing that there may be fuller, full funding for state school funds. So the current level of funding under discussion at the state level will, I, we believe, cover all of our staff and resource needs to open the coming school year. But as soon as we have more concrete information from the state, we'll be sure to come back to the Board and the CBRC with that pledged budget amendment after the special legislative session is completed. That session is anticipated to begin on August 10th, so stay tuned for more updates there. And then I just wanted to touch on what is going to be a main topic of conversation in tonight's regular meeting because it's an important milestone, something that we're asking to or planning to go to the voters with this fall and continuing to ask for their support in passing a bond that will result in not just the modernization of Benson and Jefferson High School, but also builds in a transformation and ability to really dedicate an investment in curriculum, in learning technology, and continued health and safety, and other facility upgrades. And then importantly, and I appreciate the director's conversation at our last meeting, attention to facility accessibility, which is particularly appropriate on this week, which marks the 30th anniversary of the Americans with Disabilities Act. So glad that the Board will be considering that this evening for a final vote as well. And then there's another exciting concept in there, which I want to go to the next slide about and say a little bit more about. We're excited about this concept of a Center for Black Student Excellence. I'm excited about this vision. I think it's a groundbreaking concept for a number of reasons. One, it's long overdue and much needed in our city and in a school system that too many times has marginalized Black youth and their families. This initiative allows PPS to play an important role in partnership with the broader community and lifting up our Black students. The partnership aspect is central to the ultimate success of this initiative. If we're going to truly succeed in serving Black students and youth, then we'll have to do it together. There is great power in partnership, and we could bring some things to the table, but we're a better school system when we work with our community partners to serve students. And thank you, some of you, for being on the line now. Our conversations and planning with Albina Vision are going to continue. The potential of the Center for Black Student Excellence is limitless. Again, this concept represents a constellation of school communities. This might very well be our landmark effort that will benefit generations of Black students, their families, their communities, Portland Public Schools, and the city of Portland in general. So I think this bond package has the potential to drive a foundational change for us. But I want to thank everyone, our directors, staff, volunteers, and members of our broader community for a really great deal of hard work and input that has led us to this moment. And I know we're going to have a deeper conversation, and I'll have a few more thoughts to share later in our agenda. So as a last slide to my report this evening, just want to sort of preview here. You may have noticed that around this time, at the end of each summer, as we launch into the new school year, we come up with a theme or a motto. And for this year, and I think it's appropriate, the theme is "Together We Will", and partly because we're taking on some enormous challenges and changes due to this pandemic. And so a lot of dedicated work, important work, is going to need to continue. We're going to need to be more focused than ever to meet some pretty aggressive goals and standards we've set for ourselves and stay on this path of reimagining public education in Portland. So our school leaders, as they do every summer, are going to still come together. It's not quite going to be the week-long extravaganza and culture builder that we're going to miss not being able to do, but they are going to come together for a couple of days to really prepare and plan for welcoming and engaging our students for a positive school opening, even if it's virtual. So as we work to provide and to ensure the best possible beginning to the school year, we're eagerly anticipating the day, hopefully soon, with the community's cooperation, when we can welcome students back to school. So that concludes my remarks for now. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, Superintendent Guerrero. It is now my honor and pleasure to invite Director Andrew Scott, the Chair of the School Improvement Bond Committee, to provide an overview of how the 2020 bond package was constructed.
Great, thank you, Chair Lowry. I'm really excited to introduce this item, and I'm going to provide just a quick overview and then also give a chance to some of our other board members who are heavily involved throughout the process to talk about some of the specifics. I think it's just, it's an exciting day and the culmination of many years of work to get to this point. Obviously, things that predated my term on the Board. Tonight, what the Board is deciding is whether we're going to ask voters to consider a 2020 school bond renewal that would maintain the current tax rate and continue our critical capital investments in our Portland Public Schools. Portland Public Schools has a long-range facilities plan that identifies the district's intent to request voter approval on capital constructions, bonds on a four-year cycle. This is, again, continuing that, continuing on that four-year cycle. That cycle is intended to support what really is a multi-decade, multi-billion-dollar capital improvement program to modernize the school districts, aging schools. And as some of you have heard me sort of riff before, I spent a lot of time in my career working on government infrastructure projects and trying to find funding. And I think we're at a really exciting moment within Portland Public Schools because, again, we do, voters were very generous in 2012 and generous in 2017, and we're at the point now where if we can just maintain this tax rate and continue to come forward with these with these bond renewal cycles, you know, we really can, over the next couple of decades, make a huge difference in the infrastructure in the schools that our kids attend. So for this particular measure, back in early 2019, staff began exploring options for what November 2020 bond might look like. Meetings with the School Improvement Bond Committee began in October of 2019, shortly after some new board members joined. And, you know, over the last nine months, staff and the Board of Education have met to discuss district capital planning documents and guidance. We've talked about educational and facility needs assessment and priorities. We've discussed cost estimates and different financing options, what potential bond projects might look like, what those scenarios might look like. And we've done our best to get community and stakeholder input during this time. We proposed three different options for community feedback. And even during COVID, we were able to get that feedback through surveys, through focus groups, through polling, and virtual town hall. So what we have before us tonight is the culmination of that work. It's an option that will include increased investments in curriculum and accessibility. It includes funding to modernize Jefferson High School, which I think most of us would agree, all of us would agree, is long overdue. It includes funding for planning, design, and pre-construction for the other two comprehensive high schools, Cleveland and Wilson, which will be the two remaining high schools if this bond package goes forward and passes, and really make some significant progress so that we can come back in 2024 and finish those high schools off, as I think we promised the voters we would do. And it also includes a focused investment in realizing a community vision for a Center for Black Student Excellence, which the superintendent and others have talked about and will talk about tonight, is an incredibly exciting vision and something I think is really important at this time. So in, you know, my view, this is a package that's really well-balanced. It's aligned with the district's racial equity and social justice policy. And I think most importantly, every student in the district is going to benefit from the investments that we're making in technology, in updated textbooks, in a culturally-relevant curriculum, and increased building accessibility for students, staff, and families. So that's a high-level overview. I do want to turn it over to some of our other directors to talk a little bit more about some of the specifics. Director Konstam, she also served on the School Improvement Bond Committee and, of course, chaired the school board over this last year. And I was going to ask if you could please speak to the education, health, safety, and accessibility investments in the bond.
Sure, I'm happy to. One other comment I want to make, which you touched on a little bit, is that I want to commend our staff for the public engagement process in the development of this bond package. You know, I think we never could have imagined five months ago doing this without the ability to get together in our school gyms and cafeterias and really hear from the community about what they want to see. And we did things differently. We had some sort of curated focus groups that I thought yielded really authentic, meaningful engagement that helped us improve our thinking on things. So kudos to Jonathan Garcia and Shanice Clark and their whole team for enabling us to really hear from the community about what they wanted to see. Andrew, I think you went through things fairly, fairly clearly, but I'll speak to the first couple of elements that we see in this package, and these really came forward from the superintendent as he looked at his vision for transformation for this district and specifically, how are we going to move student achievement? And as a board, we've settled on four achievement-oriented goals. And so the superintendent's marching orders were, okay, if this is what my board is going to hold my team accountable for, then I need the tools to get there. And so the first part of this package is to invest in curriculum materials. And that means, you know, some traditional materials like books, but it also means access to online materials and all kinds of things. So I think this is very, this is a very thoughtful contribution. It's not something that we have included in our capital bonds before, but given that this district is 20-plus years behind in curriculum adoption for virtually every subject and every grade level, it's sorely needed. And with the voters' blessing, once we we adopt these new curriculums, then we can be on a more traditional curriculum adoption cycle that other school districts are on to refresh materials, but we've got to make up for lost time. And another piece of that, too, is to really have the 21st century curriculum that our students are clamoring for and that they deserve. So this means ethnic studies curriculum that is integrated into, you know, all content areas and all grades, not just as a standalone elective class or something that may be a pet project as a particular teacher. We know that's not what we want for our students. We want a fully-integrated ethnic studies curriculum. So we have $53.4 million that makes up that request for curriculum. We also have $128.2 million piece in this bond for technology. And again, this is an area where our district has been sorely behind in making necessary infrastructure investments. So not only are some of our internal, you know, some of our internal hardware antiquated to the point of, like, near failure, but this also includes being able to purchase new devices and new teaching tools for all of our teachers. So that is, again, a long overdue proposed investment, and will really bring this district into the 21st century. The next area that we have is in terms of flexible special education supports, $13.4 million. And, you know, I want to call out that I think in each of the categories here, there's been a great deal of there's been a great deal of consideration given to our whole, our commitment to differentiated instruction. So all means all. And so with our curriculum materials, with our technology, those are, those are intended to and will serve all of our students. Even in the technology ask, some of that includes resources for assistive technology for some of our special education students. But we also know that we need to do more. And I appreciate Superintendent you bringing up the anniversary of the Americans with Disabilities Act because it's so important for us. And with our, our old facilities, we have a lot of work to do in terms of physical access. But we also have work to do in terms of the innovation and the ways that we serve those students. So those will support some of our focus classrooms, but, but also more thoughtfully will be in service to the inclusive education that we want to see for all of our special education students in all of our schools. We also have $33.8 million recommended specifically for physical improvements for accessibility. And we know right now that every student with a physical disability cannot attend his or her neighborhood school or any parent or grandparent or staff member cannot access each of our buildings, which is really shameful. That's not, that doesn't represent our values. It doesn't represent our social justice framework. So this, this amount of money represents first-floor accessibility in each of our schools. So that's a huge, huge difference. It doesn't get us the whole way there. We want all of every building to be accessible. And that's what our, our full modernizations do, like our, our beautiful, fully-modernized high schools. But it gets us a long way there. Andrew, did you want me to continue with the health and safety?
Yes, I believe so.
Okay, sure, sure. So, again, this is just long overdue investments on our ancient infrastructure. More than half of our buildings are over 75 years old. Some of them are at point of almost critical failure in some ways. So that includes just over $65 million for roofwork. And of course, with that roofwork comes improvements to seismic stabilization. $75 million on our mechanical systems, including our heating and cooling systems, which are really challenging in all of our buildings. I'm glad no one's having to teach in one of our school buildings today because it ends up being really tough sometimes. Almost $25.9 million in security investments. So this would, would redo all the door locks in all of our buildings and camera systems for each of our buildings. Again, most of our buildings, many built at the, at the turn of the last century, certainly didn't anticipate the kind of security concerns that we're faced with now. And they've got multiple points of entry and exit. So this is really needed work for that. And then also, an additional $17 million for some more seismic improvements and, and roof stabilization work. So this is, this is all hugely helpful for the, for the safety and well-being of our students and our staff working in our, our schools every day. So I want to thank the staff for really coming up with a thoughtful prioritized list for the board to consider because I think the figure that Deputy Superintendent Heard uses is that we have over $2 billion worth of deferred maintenance on our facilities in this district. So there are many, many more projects that we could do. But I think what we have before us is a urgent and thoughtful list of the most, the most pressing things that we can address in the next four years. And I think that's it from me.
Great, great. Thank you very much for that overview. Director DePass, you played a really critical role in leading the initiatives related to the modernization of Jefferson and the groundbreaking work for the Center for Black Student Excellence. In fact, I'll actually just say, and I think I mentioned this to you before, but it was actually your comments at our board meeting a few weeks ago that convinced me that now is the time to move forward on Jefferson. So I thank you personally for that perspective. I'd love to hear from you a little bit about the modernization of Jefferson and what's included in this bond.
Sure. Thank you, Director Scott. And I'm, when you talk, I'm also always listening to you to hear, like, Michelle's been at this for such a long time. So thank you for not going on and on about how many years I've been involved. So I'm really excited to support the modernization of Jefferson High School. And we've been hearing tonight about things that are long overdue. For about 170 years, Portland Public Schools has had issues failing communities of color, particularly Black and Indigenous students, since I think it was William Boyd tried to enroll his children in one of the two white schools in 1860. So addressing the Black community's needs are long overdue. But I'm really excited to support the modernization of Jefferson High School in this bond and in this moment for so many reasons. One, because it's the first time in my memory, which goes back a long ways, I'll admit, that PPS has seriously taken the voices of the Black community. But particularly because of the benefits it'll deliver to Black and Brown students, particularly our Black students who finally will know, if not directly, that their education matters. Black-to-Black students out there who probably aren't listening on this call right now, your education matters. Jefferson's located in a neighborhood that was once a historically Black neighborhood. But prior to that was a neighborhood of all immigrants, including my father's family. My father's family, some of you have heard this story, immigrated from Panama to Portland in 1947. My mother's family had been here for several years by that time, having come from Louisiana. My dad met my mother at Dawson Park on the first day he was here. And he joined other immigrants, including Chinese Americans, Germans, and Russians, and those from other Europeans in this neighborhood. We have two onion domes still as remnants of that, that early immigrant presence in Albina. The Albina neighborhoods encompassing King, Saban, Mississippi, Humboldt, Boise, Elliott are significant today because the areas were restricted, because it was an area that was restricted to housing Black people there, that could live there and only there, having been forced to the neighborhood after the Vanport flood. But those people that lived there could not purchase homes. If they did purchase homes like my grandparents did, they had to buy it through someone else that was not Black. There was a very thriving business district as Black people realized that they could earn middle-class wages by becoming business owners. And neighbors looked after each other. It was a different time. Dr. Unthinks' office was located there. St. Martin Preschool, named after the only Black saint. He's not a Black saint anymore. They, they took his sainthood away. But there was a preschool where the Knott Street Community Center is, and there were groceries and meat markets and, and dry cleaners, beauty shops, churches. And there were even two Black-owned banks. They were, they were called Negro-owned banks. One was affiliated through the NAACP and the other one was privately owned, American State Bank. But the city and the mortgage and real estate industries, individuals and banks did not invest in Albina, and you couldn't get a bank loan here. As a result, I have two distinct memories, memories of this neighborhood about Albina was like when I was a child, which was a long time ago. One is bustling and thriving and doing all of our business on foot. And the other was a burned-out shell of its former self with addiction and just incredible disinvestment. So you can understand why I'm excited tonight about making these significant investment in a school that has historically served Black and Brown kids for about 60 years. In addition to the modernization of Jefferson High School, I'm sorry, I've lost my place for just a moment. But in addition to the modernization of Jefferson High School that's been serving the bulk of the city's Black students, that has experienced significant investment from the district, board, and administration, we today also have imagined the opportunity to invest in a Center for Black Student Excellence that will be imagined and brought to life by the community in partnership with the district. And I just, I can't express that enough. So if, if this, if the plan sounds vague, it's because we want to keep this opening for the community to reimagine what this center looks like. I imagine that there'll be a robust process that intentionally seeks input from impacted stakeholders. And I personally hope that the community will revisit the naming conversation at Jefferson. I understand that we, the community, went through a naming conversation several years ago. And from what I hear from alumni is they would like to have that conversation again because times have changed. So shiny new building aside, I'm excited to realize, acknowledge, love, cherish, and value the excellence that's the Black community today, to demonstrate our shared vision and values through this investment, to show kids we care, we are listening, and we have big hopes for them, for our community's children. We are a resilient bunch, having survived many, many generations of disinvestment and navigating systems that were not designed for us to achieve excellence, and yet many of us have. We, we've survived. So I can't wait to witness the kids that we're investing in today as they cross that stage with their diplomas in hand, headed to the future that we help them to achieve. I don't, I think I failed to mention the dollar figure, and please correct me, Dan Jung, if I'm wrong. It's a 300, represents a $365 million investment. That's, that's $305 million for the modernization of Jefferson and about $60 million for the Center for Black Student Success.
Thank you, Director DePass. That was really important history and, and, and powerful words in this moment. So thank you for sharing. I think it's a really, really exciting, from, from my perspective, the most exciting part of this bond. Vice Chair Bailey, who has also served on the School Improvement Bond Committee over this last year, you also participated in the Benson Design Advisory Group from Benson and engaged with the Multiple Pathways to Graduation work. Can you provide a quick overview of what's in this package for that project?
Well, Director DePass, that's a tough act to follow. But I am, you know, we considered a number of options over the last couple of months in terms of how to structure this bond. But one piece of the bond that was in every one of those options was rebuilding Benson and building a new building for our Multiple Pathways to Graduation programs. So I have been sitting in on those meetings for Benson. Director Brent Edwards has been representing us in the discussions for the, and excuse me, MPG, not miles per gallon, Multiple Pathways to Graduation building. And there are, there are real contrasts. Benson is rebuilding a historic building, which is a real challenge, while the MPG building is brand-new. But it was also challenging because of the variety of programs there and trying to build something that worked for everybody and had some synergy as well. So it's been a privilege for both of us to, to sit on, on, on those. And again, one of the, one of the real areas that this district has made strides in over the last couple of years is moving towards a true system of career and technical education programs in all of our high schools. But of course, Benson is the flagship for that. And having a modern Benson will, will help us even more deliver state-of-the-art career and technical education programs for our students in partnership with businesses and unions across the city. So I'm really excited about that. When it comes to the Multiple Pathways to Graduation program, one, I have to, again, thank students from programs like Alliance and PISA for giving us a swift kick a couple of years ago and saying, you know, what about us? And that really gave us the impetus to move ahead and to prioritize building that building. So programs that will, some of the MPG programs will be in Benson. Some will be in the new building. But they'll all have modern facilities. Just very excited about that. So again, that includes Alliance, which is currently split between Alliance at Meek and Alliance at Benson. I'm wearing my Reconnect t-shirt here because the Reconnect program that goes after students that our high schools have lost track of to haul them back in and help them get that diploma will be housed there. There'll be a Teen Parent Center there. Our DART program that works with the students in long-term treatment will be there as well. The PISA program, which works with new immigrant students. And I hope I'm not leaving anybody out. Apologies if I am. But some really important programs, again, will get some great facilities going forward.
Great. Thank you very much, Vice Chair Bailey. Director Moore, there are three high schools I mentioned briefly in, in this bond that are going to benefit from a significant advancement in terms of their construction or design. Could you share a little bit the Cleveland Wilson and Roosevelt Design implementation plans?
Thank you. I want to give a little bit of history, not nearly as much as Director DePass, but I think it's worth remembering how all of this started. In 2012, the Portland community agreed to, voted for a bond, which was the first bond for construction, new construction in Portland Public Schools since 1995. And this is my cat who says hello. And in 2012, it was coming on the heels of the Long Range Facilities Planning Committee that outlined a 30-year plan to modernize all of the schools in Portland's 82-school portfolio. For the 2012 bond, the, the focus of that bond and, and the, the initial focus for the modernization work was determined to be high schools. A lot of the reasons went into it was partially a product of the time. But starting with the 2012 bond, Portland Public Schools has been modernizing its entire high school portfolio, piece by piece. And with this bond, we're going to be tackling Jefferson High School. And then we're also going to be providing, funding for the design and pre-construction planning for the remaining high schools, Cleveland and Wilson, that will be completely remodernized. In addition to that, we're providing funds for the design and pre-construction work for Roosevelt High School to be expanded to, to a 1,700-capacity to match all of the other, the capacity of all of the other high schools. And the, the hope, the expectation here is that because we're using this bond the, the next four years to do all of this pre-construction planning, the hope is that these three high schools will then be included in a follow-on bond, presumably in 2024, to continue on this path toward modernization. And if the 2024 bond passes with the approval of the voters, then construction could start as early as 2025. So this is another step in the, in the, in our journey toward creating 21st-century high schools and responding to enrollment growth in North Portland. And it's, it's very exciting. And this will allow the, the original 2012 conception of this kind of first tranche of completing a, a level of schools in the district. It will maintain the momentum and we'll be able to start construction, hopefully, as soon as the next bond passes. So, thank you.
Great. Thank you, Director Moore. Last, but definitely not least, in fact, maybe most importantly, Director Brent Edwards is Chair of the Audit Committee. Can you speak to some of the review and accountability measures that are going to be included in this bond moving forward? I think you're muted, Director Brent Edwards.
You missed the, the thank you to you. Thank you, Director Scott. As Director Scott mentioned, it's important to note that this, that the bond tax rate in this package is going to be a continuation of the current rate. So it's a renewal, it's a flat rate. It'll likely be the only bond or levy on the Portland ballot. It'll likely be the only bond or levy on the Portland ballot this fall that will not be an increase or a new tax. So really important for voters to know this is, this is a renewal. It's also important that we demonstrate to taxpayers that we're good stewards of the dollars, the capital dollars they give us, just as we are with the operating dollars that we receive. So what will that stewardship looks like, look like? First, we'll continue to have an independent External Bond Performance Auditor, SEC, reviewing the bond expenditures as they currently do for the 2017 bond. Those audits are presented and will be presented to the External Bond Accountability Committee and to the PPS Audit Committee. And the audits and the district responses are all posted online at pps.net. And second, we'll have an ongoing review and audit, auditing by our external financial auditors who will look at internal controls and compliance with state and public regulations and laws. And third, in addition, we have, and I feel bad because like compared to Director de Pass's speech, this is all about the financial controls and our review and the expenditures, but I think certainly important for our taxpayers. So the third sort of layer of auditing, we'll have contract auditing, which is looking at a guaranteed maximum price. And they'll review and audit invoices and change orders as they currently do and have done with the Franklin High School, the Grant High School, and the Roosevelt High School bond projects. So, you know, as a taxpayer and the Chair of the Audit Committee, I have confidence that the expenditures currently, that our bond expenditures currently receive, and if the voters approve the 2020 bond, that the expenditures will receive a very thorough review. And where there have been issues that the auditors have raised, the district staff has been very responsive, integrating recommendations and into the ongoing operations and work of the Office of School Modernization. In addition, this, this time, the board decided to add another pre-referral check on our bond and expenditure planning. So the Bond Accountability Committee, which is made up of community members with professional expertise, they currently advise the staff and the board on the bond. And this, in addition to staff review and board review, this external group of community experts who volunteer their times, also, we asked if we could add another responsibility to their current charter. So last October, we amended the charter to add, we asked first, but to add onto their list of responsibilities to review future district bond planning, including cost estimating processes and risk management strategies. And I will say that the, while the Bond Accountability Committee has a full plate, they agreed to undertake this. So there were a number of informal meetings between staff, the Bond Accountability Committee. I know some board members attend those meetings. But once we had a proposed bond package, the BAC met to review the package that we're going, that we're considering tonight. And I'm going to close my section here by asking Kevin Spellman, who is the Chair of the Bond Accountability Committee, to give a recap of their review of the 2020 bond measure. And I also want to, as Kevin gets prepared to speak, I just want to thank all the members of the BAC because this was over and above what we already asked them to do, which is a considerable amount of work in reviewing the expenditures on behalf of the district and the community and protecting taxpayers' investment. So with that, hopefully I can turn it over to Kevin. Chair Lowry, is he on?
I can see Mr. Spellman, and I see that he is still muted. Oh, there we go. There you are, Mr. Spellman.
All right, thank you, Director Brim Edwards. Indeed, when, when you changed our charter last October, another way of putting it, I think, was to have us kind of take a look at staff's work and ensure that the amount of money being asked from the voters on any future bond was consistent with the scope that was being promised. So that's the charge we, we took on. We met with staff, I think, a total of six or seven times. But most of the work was done as the scope of the proposed program became clearer in the last four or five weeks. And I know several of you board members sat in on some or all of those. What we, the process we used was we looked at every piece of the proposed program and explored how staff had calculated the associated costs. And it's, I think it's important to note that this is not necessarily always a science. Sometimes it's an art. And some aspects of the work are clearly more well-defined than others. And really, that's where we tried to bring our technical expertise and ensure that staff has brought, had brought data in support of their, their costing techniques. And those where the scope was still rather undefined, we tended to explore their use of professional judgment. We asked questions, we made suggestions, we asked in some areas for a rethink. And then we reviewed the district's responses to all of those. And I have to really compliment the staff on how they handled this process because I'm sure some of our comments were not necessarily always made totally artfully, but they were nimble and professional, even though they're working under extraordinary time pressures with furloughs, et cetera, not to mention COVID, et cetera. As far as our conclusion is concerned, we issued a memo to the board, and we're pleased to present our conclusion here that in our judgment, the pricing of the bond package before you is appropriately supported by robust, professional cost estimating processes and risk management strategies.
Great. Thank you. And again, as, as Director Brim Edwards said, thank you, Kevin, for your work and the work of all of these BAC members. It's really important, we appreciate that you're saying. Chair Lowry, I'm going to turn it back over to you for the rest of this item.
Excellent, thank you, Director Scott. We have some public comments and testimony on the bond. And each person will have three minutes to share your thoughts. And we'll begin with Kathy Reynolds, who's going to speak with us about MPG.
Good evening, can you hear me? Good evening, Superintendent School Board members. Good. My name is Kathy Reynolds, R-E-Y-N-O-L-D-S, pronounced she/her. And I appreciate being able to provide testimony regarding the Multiple Pathways building as a central element of the upcoming bond measure. As a parent of a Multiple Pathway student and as a member of their DAG, it's been my pleasure to be part of the process and to bring to you what MPG does and some of the many benefits that the new facility will create for the students who have long been served, frankly, underserved in substandard facilities. Multiple Pathways serves majority students of color, Black, Native American, Latinx, from six weeks of age to age 21, enrolled in schools as well as district-wide programs. Everyone in MPG works tirelessly to create an education system that works for all students, to make every student feel welcome, wanted, and worthy. This is what this new building will convey to our students and our families, that they are worthy and that we as a district value and are making space to center their experience and their membership in PPS. Over 1,000 families will be served each year in Reconnection Outreach Services. Alliance High School students will come together from both of Meek and Benson campuses. Dart Clinton School, whose students and teachers work with three community and mental health partners, will bring those students together in their day treatment programs. Teen Parent Services will have a childcare facility to serve MPG and Benson High School infants and toddlers. In the DAG, we have been really intentional in our thinking about how the facility can reinforce Multiple Pathways values, social-emotional wellness, and have a deep menu of academic programming for the students. We have brought trauma-informed design to the center of our discussion. What the MPG building will provide includes a welcoming space that is warm and inviting for all families, specifically for racially diverse communities. We want the entrance to be that of a living room experience. We want them to be welcome and belong. It's a facility designed for people with various needs. We've heard about ADA, wheelchairs, strollers, varying levels of anxiety, and that provides private confidential offices for mental health counseling support, IEP testing. I mentioned bringing together Alliance High School campuses so we can share those valuable resources, space, equipment, staff. We're going to have automotive manufacturing, digital media, natural resources, culinary CTE strands. And Dart Clinton students will have access to CTE in their building for the first time ever. Teen parents will have access to childcare and social workers at the same facility as their school. We will have showers. MPG serves many homeless students, and yet the current facilities don't have showers and laundry. We will have food pantry services for our students and families who need them. We will have a gym, not just to meet our basic PE requirements. Our students need movement, yes, but it will also allow for school assemblies, guest speakers, cultural celebrations. Our staff and leadership and families speak about how this building represents a larger cultural community, bringing families together who are so often displaced. So the work that we are doing is inspiring. We know creating a welcoming space helps increase enrollment, attendance, and graduation, as reflected in Alliance's class of 2020, who right now has 132 graduates. Having the MPG building in the bond is the right thing to do, and we know it will raise student achievement. Funding the completion of the building in this bond package is in complete alignment with the PPS strategic plan. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Jason Trombley, speaking about the three high schools.
Good evening, can everyone hear and see me?
Yes.
Perfect. Good evening, Chair Lowry, Student Representative Shu, Members of the Board and Superintendent Guerrero. Good evening. For the record, my name is Jason Trombley, spelled T-R-O-M-B-L-E-Y. I am both a PPS alum and an active volunteer in PPS. Recently, the co-chair of District Committees Addressing Enrollment and School Boundaries, a public advocate for the 2017 bond, and recent co-chair of the Lincoln High School DAG. I'm pleased to be here before you to speak in favor of the 2020 bond proposal that is up for consideration this evening and the opportunities that lay ahead. At a systemic level, it takes us a large step closer towards completing the modernization of our entire high school system portfolio. By investing resources now, this investment provides the Wilson High School community plenty of time for generations of the community to come together and design what this campus will reflect and stand for when construction is complete. This bond gives the community time to work through a series of significant set of questions that are connected. The name of the new school, how the new design will reflect and incorporate the next chapter of the school community, and where do and how all students will engage and learn during construction. For the Cleveland High School community, this investment and planning resources now helps provide stability for this community. It gives their new principal time, who recently worked through the early design and planning process at Lincoln, to engage with the community early and learn from the observations at the Lincoln campus and work through the Cleveland campus's complexity. For the Roosevelt community, this investment is another step forward to bring their facility to parity with other modernized campuses. But at a long-term level, this work provides an important investment for future work, as seen in the Proposed Educational and Accessibility Investment Section of this bond package. Among the investments here, I'd like to note my support for the Middle School Redesign Section. This investment package is an important move because it allows the district to both codify and fund what the programs will be for students in lower grades and the supports needed to ensure that all students can access these programs. This investment is essential. In sum, this bond accomplishes two significant goals. One, it moves us forward towards completing efforts to modernize our high school portfolio. And two, it provides the district time and resources to continue its work to design and invest in curriculum and services for students in grades K through eight. This allows future bonds to be crafted to ensure that the modernization projects included are designed to help implement the programs we envision with our students. This bond is the right step to take, especially in this moment in time. And with that, thank you for the opportunity to testify about the 2020 bond proposal before you all this evening.
Thank you, Jason. Our next public testimony is from, sorry, Lakeitha Elliott. Please correct this pronunciation of your first name. Speaking about the Jefferson and the Center for Black Excellence.
Yes, so yes, Lakeitha Elliott, you have it correct. So good evening, board members. My name is Lakeitha Elliott, last name E-L-L-I-O-T-T. And before I talk about the proposal, I just want to tell you a little bit about who I am. I'm a proud third-generation alumni of Jefferson High School, the best high school in PPS. My grandfather attended Jefferson in the 50s. My parents, my grandfather led the school to its first state championship in basketball. My parents met at Jefferson High School in the 70s, and I actually attended Jefferson for preschool and came back for high school. I'm the proud parent of a fourth-generation alumni. My son graduated from Jefferson in 2015, and I currently have a niece attending who's carrying on the family tradition. Additionally, at various times, I've served as a secretary, vice president, and president of the Jefferson PTSA, and have been here in front of the school board on many occasions to advocate for Jefferson High School. I tell you those things to give you a sense of how deep my love is for the school of champions. I also want you to know that I've served on various PPS committees. Jason Trombley, who just heard from, we have a running joke about who's served on the most committees. And we kind of had a joke about this is our first one via video. But I served on the High School Design Committee and also on the Long Range Facilities Committee with Director Bailey. And at the time, it was initially suggested that Jefferson be the first school on the list for upgrade or modernization. And that option was taken off the table because at the time, the school was starting the middle college. And there were concerns about if it made sense to, you know, to do a redesign and disrupt students during, you know, during that start of that new program. But I agreed to that decision with the understanding that Jeff will be on the next bond and was disappointed that it was not. It's time now to ensure that the school is modernized. Much of the school still looks the same as it did when my grandfather attended in the 50s. I also want you to know a little bit about my story. So I grew up within blocks of Jefferson High School and attended Humboldt and Tubman schools. In the eight, in the 80s, my parents became addicted to drugs, and myself and my four siblings ended up being raised by my grandmother. My siblings were some of the first SEI students. I participated in Urban League of Portland programs. My sister attended the Alternative School at the Urban League of Portland. We sometimes accessed the Saturday School Program that was organized by our community. When I was a student at Humboldt, there were teachers and other adults who had grown up in the neighborhood of my parents and who knew, who knew and understood my situation and were able to provide a level of love and care that helped me thrive despite my situation. I often tell people that even though my parents were away in their addictions, I grew up in a community that cared for me, and I never felt like I was lacking the support I needed to succeed. In a way, I grew up in a Center for Black Excellence. There are people like myself and Rakai Adams, a leader with Albina Vision, and the King Gabe Harmon Johnson, the Director of the Urban League of Portland, who grew up in that same community. What you see in our continued engagement and service to our community is a direct result of the kind of community we grew up in and what it looks like when a community invests in their children. The reason that Albina Vision and SEI and Kairos and others in our community can vision something as big and bold as the Center for Black Student Excellence is partially because we've seen and experienced what a thriving, connected black community, where adults are committed to the education and success of its own people, looks like. In a recent article about Rakai Adams, she is quoted as saying that the Albina community, that if you looked at it from a wealth perspective, it would have seemed to be under-resourced and small. But to be inside of it as a black girl, I was surrounded by people who knew my name and knew my family, and the adults created the environment for me to be strong. You may or may not be able to see, I'm wearing my Black Kids Matter shirt from Kairos. I've also been here in front of the school board to advocate for Kairos on a lot of occasions. Initially, when they first applied for their charter, because I believed in the type of education that they, they provide. My nephew was one of the first graduates of Kairos, and I brought him to a school board meeting when we were advocating to keep Kairos at Humboldt. And at one point during the meeting, he looked over at me, he was like, wow, I didn't know this many people cared about me and my school. You have the opportunity in this investment to create the next generation of Black young people who know that people care about them, who can experience growing up in an educational environment, that they can experience success and be strong and become the leaders we need. So I urge you to, to make this investment and to honor the commitment to the students at Jefferson and the families who will hopefully attend Jefferson in the future. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Our next speaker is, oops, I scrolled down, so I'm missing my list. Our next speaker is Roberta Phillips-Robins, also talking about the Center for Black Excellence.
Hi, can you hear me okay?
Yes.
H-I-L-L-P-R-O-B-B-I-N-S, parent of a rising second grader at Kairos PDX. Thank you for the opportunity to share some thoughts with you this evening. I would like to acknowledge PPS's proactive role in partnering with Kairos and Albina Vision Trust to rise to the demands of the current environment that we are in. Only brave and bold leadership will close the achievement gap in our district. I acknowledge the PPS Board and staff committing resources specifically designed to support black children and their families. It is about high time. This legislative victory would not have been possible without the important contributions of civic leaders, including Ronnie Herndon, Joyce Harris, and many others, champions for black children who refuse to give up and accept the same old failing outcomes for our community. Let me be clear. In this moment, and through this bond referral, you have an opportunity to bring us all closer to the vision established in Brown v. Board of Ed. The truth is that America has failed black children, and Portland Public Schools has failed black children. Within this district, black children have succumbed to disproportionate discipline, abysmal graduation rates, and referral to the criminal justice system, and those are just the highly publicized failures. Let's talk about the failures we can't easily quantify. Black children shuffled into lower-performing schools and programs, black children who leave a system believing that they are not meant to reach their potential. How many physicians, scholars, award-winning artists, and entrepreneurs would we have within the black community if our children were to reach their potential? Again, that number is difficult to quantify, but I offer that even one is unacceptable. In failing black children, this body has failed black families, and it's failed the black community. An important step in the right direction is to support the Center for Black Student Excellence, and I urge you to take that important step. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Angela Jarvis-Holland, speaking about the ADA.
Hello? Can you hear me? Okay, well, I just want to say how moved I felt by the testimony that I've heard, and it's like we each have a slot where we're speaking to one piece of this bond, but I think it's really important that I just acknowledge Black Lives Matter and that all of these pieces need to connect to the RASJ framework, and ADA is a piece of that framework in my mind. And it is the 30th anniversary, and my community were very pleased that there was a reconsideration and support for some important changes made by the Board last week. And I've been talking a lot, I represent 5,000 families, and disability crosses every boundary. There are people of all races, all incomes, all sexualities who experience disabilities. So it's kind of an interesting intersection. But I think that what we have is this moment and this reminder from our wider community to really pay attention. And this possibility, and I commend the leadership of Guadalupe, and I commend the black volunteers, leaders, teachers who are willing to come back to the table, the same as somebody that was with me 12 years ago working on ADA, came back and gave me testimony and talked to me and encouraged me to keep me motivated and come back and work with the school board. It's a moment for us to realize our interconnections. So ADA is about belonging, and I think that's really what this bond is about. It's about belonging, because if we had a hierarchy of need, nobody can learn if they don't believe they belong. If we don't believe we belong, our minds are troubled, our ability to learn is not with us, and then the curriculum and the intersections and the respect is the next layer that we need help with. So ADA is long overdue. I'm hoping in the next bond, we, we complete paying the debt that is owed. But I'm also excited to see these pieces fit together, and I make a commitment as a woman, a white woman, a privilege, that I'm looking for how I will bring my best self to the table as I represent many other folks' voices and how I'll elevate their voices in the, in the work ahead. And I think if we can all speak to these intersections and speak with pride about what's being attempted here as we try and market and encourage people to support this bond, then Portland's going to be a better place, and Portland Public Schools will be a place that we can really truly be proud of. So I just like the thought that I'm standing alongside so many other warriors. I consider myself a social justice warrior. My two children went through Portland Public Schools. One had mental health issues and is an incredible artist. Daniel, my son, has Down Syndrome. There were difficult days. He considers himself a media guy and went to Benson. I can see that we were able to carve a space with privilege. I don't want people to have to hack their way through to find justice. I want us to put a path in front of them that says welcome. And I'm grateful to be part of this community of PPS and this community of people on this call this evening. Thank you.
Our final speaker tonight will be Michael Alexander.
I am trying to get, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, and can you see me?
No.
Good, let's start here and see if that, okay. My name is Michael Alexander, last name is A-L-E-X-A-N-D-E-R, and I am actually Secretary of Albina Vision Trust and also past President of the Urban League of Portland. I want to extend greetings to all on the call tonight and particularly to the Board. Albina Vision Trust is pleased to offer endorsement and support for the proposed bond renewal, and we are particularly excited about the commitment to the revitalization and renovation of Jefferson and looking into the creation and the planning and design of the Center for Black Student Excellence. You know, I really could have given my time to Director DePass as she offered her comments because they reflected many of my own thoughts. It's not lost on any of us that the Portland School Board, in its 170-year history, was created at a time when the accountability and the service to black Oregonians was not a part of its portfolio. And clearly, base assumptions that were built into that system and others embrace concepts of racism and cultural deprivation that we have had to address over time. I commend the School Board for its commitment 10 years ago to its policy of racial equity, and over the course of that time, there's been ongoing efforts to begin to unpack some of the impacts of that work and that mitigation against the efforts and the needs of black communities here in Oregon and particularly in Portland. But I think the events of the last several weeks have told us that whatever we've done, it's not been enough. And clearly, one of the takeaways is that you cannot fix what you won't face. And I am heartened by the resolution that was passed by the Board in its June meeting and the language contained within this resolution, which owns up to the history that has been a part of the nonperformance of the School Board over the course of many, many decades. We have an opportunity now to create new history. We have an opportunity now to begin to invest in the students in this community who are most deserving of the best that we can do. And the Center for Black Student Excellence is a wonderful opportunity for us to step back and create a new pathway. It's clear that many of the things that have been a part of our history need to be revisited. I support Director DePass and looking at particularly naming convention changes. Some of you were here several months ago when Mayor Landrow, Mitch Landrow from New Orleans came and spoke and talked about the challenges he faced in removing Confederate statues, monuments to the Confederacy. But you know, that's only a part of it. It's wonderful that our children do not have to walk past institutions that are named after individuals, many of whom whose primary distinction was largely associated with their support and endorsement of slavery. But it's equally important to identify what we've replaced it with. And we have the opportunity with this center and the innovations of concept, pedagogy, and partnership with organizations here locally that have absolutely committed themselves to advancing the educational dreams and interests of black children as their core mission. SCI, Kairos, the work that's being done at Rosemary Anderson High School, and many others. We can create new history. And so I commend Superintendent Guerrero, I commend the leadership team, I commend the Board for the courage to not only look at change, but look at the change that will define the world that our children and our grandchildren will live in, that many of us will never see. And so, thank you very much for the opportunity to offer some comments, and know that the Albina Vision Trust is fully committed to partnering with you and to navigating this path wherever it takes us, because we believe that it will be a noble one that will put us on the right side of history.
Thank you, Mr. Alexander. I think you're going to really like what's coming next, which is that we are now considering a resolution in support of centering black student excellence in Portland Public Schools. Dr. DePass, would you please read the resolution aloud? Are you there, Michelle? She had texted me that she was having some internet issues.
I am.
We can hear you, so that's good.
Yeah, so, okay. Okay, yeah, I'm sorry, I'm having some, some issues. Mr. Alexander, I heard about maybe a third of your testimony, but thank you anyhow for being here. So bear with me, this is long, but it's important. It's a resolution in support of the Center for Black Student Excellence in Portland Public Schools. In 2019, the Board of Education adopted PPS Reimagined, a community-driven vision for what we want for the graduates, systems, system, and educators of the Portland Public Schools. This ambitious vision represents the values and aspirations of thousands of Portland students, families, staff, partners, and members of the community, and articulates our foundational and enduring belief in racial equity and social justice, and that all students can succeed academically. We believe in the fundamental right to human dignity and believe that generating an equitable world requires an educational system that intentionally disrupts and builds leaders to disrupt systems of oppression. A decade after the PPS Board adopted a historic racial educational equity policy that held racial equity and social justice as central tenets toward decisions and actions, PPS is determined to bring about racial justice and equity in our district, espousing a counter-narrative for our black, native, and students of color. Through an updated racial equity and social justice framework and plan, PPS continues its steadfast commitment to creating access to an array of opportunities for students, especially students of color, aligning our cultural norms, practices, and structures so that they center the lived experiences and hopes of our black, native, and students of color, developing culturally responsive practices, including equitable budgeting, and strengthening our partnerships with culturally specific, community-based providers to tailor individual supports to the needs of our students. An important aspect of this work is acknowledging the cultural and institutional racism that has existed in our system since its inception. Over our history, PPS has promoted racist policies, protocols, and procedures, helping to reinforce racist cultural narratives, beliefs, and norms. Six years before Oregon proposed a state constitution banning black people from entering, residing, or acquiring property, Portland Public Schools, Oregon's now largest school system, was established. For close to 170 years, PPS has failed communities of color, especially black and Native American students, from the time of its founding, when William Brown, a resident of Portland in the 1860s, was denied the right to enroll his children in one of Portland's only two public elementary schools, launching what would be the first recorded case of racism against black children in Portland Public Schools. While our commitment to calling out and eradicating systems of oppression is clear in our vision, we also know that cultural and institutional racism continues to produce disparities and negatively impacts lives of our students of color, specifically black students. Reflecting on our community's vision for PPS, our core values, and educational system shifts, along with the acknowledgement of persistent racialized predictors for student outcomes, PPS must strategically utilize and invest resources in a targeted and culturally responsive manner to achieve racial equity and social justice. Culturally specific organizations are uniquely positioned to partner with PPS to support our racial equity and social justice goals, and we rely on our continued partnerships with them to implement culturally responsive family engagement mentoring wraparound services and support. On June 11th of this year, the Board unanimously approved Resolution 6130, declaring that the lives of black students and our black community matter, and committing to working with the Portland community to create the conditions for every student, especially our black and native students, who experience the greatest challenges to realize the vision of the graduate portrait. The Albina Vision Trust is a nonprofit organization facilitating the thoughtful reinvention and transformation of the 94 acres of Lower Albina, from which thousands of primarily black residents were forcibly displaced over decades of urban renewal. Recognizing the power and importance of education, Albina Vision Trust seeks to develop a youth-centered community in Lower Albina that creates opportunities for Portland's next generation of black people to learn, build wealth, and reclaim home. This Albina Vision neighborhood, this Albina neighborhood would allow for intentional design for the safety of black and brown children in the urban environment, while at the same time providing the housing and community stability that supports education. Equitable access to public education has long been a key component of the civil rights movement and fight for racial justice. Building on the legacy of advocacy for black children in Portland and catalyzed by the social movement for black lives, black Portland community leaders have put forth the concept of the Center for Black Student Excellence. This concept endeavors to center the experience, promote opportunities, accelerate outcomes, and celebrate the achievements of Portland's black children. This new collective impact effort channels the decades of visionary leadership and culturally responsive and pedagogic, pedaglog, I'm sorry, stumbling, pedagogically sustaining approaches of community-based nonprofits like Self-Enhancement, Inc., and Kairos PDX, among other black-led, culturally-specific organizations here in Portland. This emerging community-led concept seeks, seeks to unify and elevate the educational experience of Portland's black children and their families, connecting a constellation of community schools such as Boise Elliott Humboldt Elementary, Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. Elementary, Tubman Middle School, and Jefferson High School, and black-led, community-based organizations in the Albina neighborhood, which there are many. The Center for Black Student Excellence will work with the students, families, and community stakeholders to develop a coherent set of strategies that will positively impact student achievement and outcomes while affirming student identity, and will include promoting and supporting culturally responsive, sustaining teaching and learning from cradle to career. The Center for Black Student Excellence will serve as a living expression of Portland Public Schools' expressed commitment to black lives and will help advance PPS's mission to prepare students for compassionate, to be compassionate, critical, and prayer to lead a more socially just world. On July 28, 2020, tonight, the PPS Board will consider adopting a resolution to place a general obligation bond on the November 3, 2020 ballot. If approved, the proposed bond will allocate up to $371 million, off by $6 million, to modernize Jefferson High School, and will launch the design and implementation of the Center for Black Student Excellence in neighborhood schools and facilities in north and northeast Portland, especially in the heart of historic Albina neighborhood. I, now therefore, the Board of Education affirms that it will stand shoulder to shoulder with the black community who continue to be central to building this nation, who have fought and continue to fight for more just and equitable opportunities here in Portland and across the United States. Stands strongly in its commitment to authentically listen, learn, and partner with our community's black elders and listen to our black youth to address the cultural and institutional racism that has existed in our system since its inception. Commits to affirming its long-held belief to lead a robust racial equity and social justice agenda and centering the lived experiences of our black students, these educators and staff in our actions, decisions, and words. Firmly stand behind the community-inspired idea of the Center for Black Student Excellence, both as a physically built and both as a physically-built environment and as a designated set of culturally responsive strategies, immediate and long-term plans, and culturally-specific partnerships to advance black student achievement in PPS. Affirms the phased approach to implementation based on a Center for Black Student Excellence conceptual and overall plan, starting with Phase One focused investments in north and northeast Portland, facilitates funded through the general obligation bond referred to in the November 3, 2020 ballot, if approved by voters. Directs the superintendent to resource and develop a clear roadmap for the design of the Center for Black Student Excellence, an initiative that focuses on group of community schools by supporting optimal teaching and learning environments and promoting culturally responsive strategies, and to continue to partner with culturally-specific, black-led, and black-serving community-based organizations to develop these plans. And finally, requests that the superintendent provide their public updates to the Board of Education on the progress made toward the conceptual design and implementation of the Center for Black Student Excellence.
Thank you, Director DePass. Before I turn this over to Superintendent Guerrero, I did want to apologize for any confusion I caused by saying that was the last public comment. That was the last public comment of that section. Don't worry, we have like four more sections of public comment tonight. So if you're anxiously awaiting to share, there is ample opportunity. Superintendent Guerrero, I'm going to turn it over to you to introduce this item.
Thank you, Chair Lowry, and thank you, Director DePass, for reading what I think is a very strongly worded, ambitious, and inspiring resolution. I hope you're feeling, directors, a little bit of what I'm feeling as I listen to each of you describe key elements of this bond campaign. Because in my short tenure here in Portland, what's going through my mind is late evenings, hearing Alliance students talk about facilities they don't have access to. I'm thinking of Saturday mornings with Spanish-speaking mothers of special needs students. Thank you, Angela. I'm thinking of all those critical voices, many of whom we've heard here tonight. In particular, community leaders that I want to well-recognize have been engaged in this advocacy for a long time. And I'm just proud that we're at this moment this evening in this milestone to address so many wonderful aspects that are going to mean so much to our students, not just in their learning environment, to their health and safety, to hopefully not walk around with 20-year-old textbooks held together by duct tape. Of course, I'm excited about instructional materials. But I've got to say, the element that for me stands out the most is the one that we have just heard a lot of testimony about. And that's actually following through on investing in our black students specifically. This concept of a Center for Black Excellence, which by the way, represents a geographical constellation of school communities, but more importantly, an approach of culturally sustaining pedagogy and practices that lifts up the gifts and talents of our black students. I'm thinking of endless conversations with leaders like Mr. Tony Hobson. Thank you for being with us here this evening, who says often to me, "We know how to do this." Right? And I think this, this is an opportunity to really engage in that collective impact that, Director DePass, you were just referring to, that together, we can actually create that counter-narrative here in Portland. We can be that demonstration. We can do what we know is possible, particularly when there's such a rich history here in the city. Thank you, Lakeitha, for sharing that, your story, in the same way that Director DePass did as well. So I'd be very excited to receive this kind of directive from our directors as it considers this resolution. I can't think of a more powerful mandate to have and to jump into this work in the same way that I know that the staff would look forward to addressing all those other elements. So I just want to commend the directors for what I'm hearing is a really grand consensus on an ambitious agenda for every one of our students, but especially those who we haven't provided that same opportunity. So, so thank you for this, for reaching this milestone this evening.
Thank you, Superintendent Guerrero. The Board will now bring forward Resolution Number 6150, Resolution in Support of Centering Black Student Excellence in Portland Public Schools. Do I have a motion?
I'm moved.
Second.
Second.
No, sir. Go ahead.
Director Constan moves, and Director DePass seconds the motion to adopt Resolution 6150. And I believe there are two public comments on Resolution 6150. Is that correct, Ms. Bradshaw?
We have first Joe McFerrin.
All right, Mr. McFerrin.
Can you hear me? Oh, good. Good evening, Chair Lowry, PPS Board members, Superintendent Guerrero, and attendees present this evening. My name is Joe McFerrin, spelled M-C-C-A-P-L-I-R-I-N. Second, I serve as President and CEO of Portland OIC and the Rosemary Anderson Schools. In my work, I have spent the last 25 years providing a safety net of education, youth development, and wraparound services for African-American students suspended, expelled, and pushed out of the Portland Public School system and other district systems throughout Moncton County. And many of these students have been disproportionately involved with the Juvenile Justice Center. I enthusiastically support the Portland Public Schools 2020 Bond Renewal to include the Center for Black Excellence. I would like to commend the district for all your work, your courage, for partnering with Kairos, the Albina Trust, to ensure that black children have access to the highest quality education they deserve and that so many of our ancestors fought and died for. Yes, vote for the Center for Black Student Excellence from PPS. Will signal to the black community locally and throughout this country that you are serious about equity, unlike so many other private and public sector organizations that have used the concept of equity in a hollow and superficial way to appease stakeholders. Sit before you as the result of the Center for Black Student Excellence and its concepts. From the first grade to the third grade, I attended the Black Educational Center. BEC was led by Ronnie Herndon, and you all know how much of an advocate and effective leader he has been for our community. And my homeroom teacher was Joyce Harris, who taught me how to read. My experience at the Black Educational Center gave me the confidence and the skills to succeed academically despite the challenges I ultimately faced in PPS, grounded in low expectations. While in high school, I participated in SCI, where I was counseled by African-American men who instilled in me that failure was not an option and pushed me to reach my full potential as a student athlete to conduct myself with the highest level of integrity. The Center for Black Student Excellence will give so many African-American students the true history of the contributions of black people to the building of this country and the confidence, belief, and trust, and tools they need to prosper. I will do whatever I can to ensure the success for the Center of Black Student Excellence. And I'll say this as I close, a couple of things. I remember having dinner with Guadalupe when he arrived early on the scene, and I have to admit that I wasn't quite sure where he was going or his real commitment. But I got to say, and I want to say it publicly, Superintendent Guadalupe has continued to step up for black kids and other kids of color in a way that I haven't seen before. And I just wanted to call that out. I really appreciate your leadership. I look forward to walking alongside you and support you in any way that I can. Lastly, I'll say this. I have a grandchild. I have another one on the way. And knowing that there's going to be a Center for Black Student Excellence in our community, I don't have to consider a Central Catholic necessarily. I don't have to consider a Catholic Gable. I could consider a Portland Public School that will support them in a way that I would support it in our community as a child. Thank you.
Joe, Ms. Bradshaw, I understand we have one more public comment? On this part, don't worry.
On this part, yeah. Tony Hobson?
Yeah, can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
Right. For the record, my name is Tony Hobson, Sr., H-O-P, it's a Peter, S-O-N. I'm the President and CEO of Self-Enhancement, Inc. Let me just say good evening to the Board, to all the staff of Portland Public Schools, and all of the participants that are on this very long call. I have the distinct pleasure tonight to speak to you as a past student of Jefferson High School, a past parent of Jefferson High School, grandparent of Jefferson High School, a staff member of Jefferson High School, and a staff member of Portland Public Schools for over 10 years. So I have 55 years of experience within Portland Public Schools. We are looking at a vote tonight that would move forward a bond measure to modernize Jefferson High School and provide resources to pursue the concept Center for Black Excellence. First, in the resolution, you recognize and acknowledge the cultural and institutional racism that has existed within Portland Public Schools for decades. With that, we should also acknowledge, if not for that same institutional racism, the Jefferson modernization would have been one of the first efforts of modernization and not one of the last. Tonight, we entertain the concept of black student excellence as if it's a new concept. We have had black student excellence in the Jefferson Cluster in spite of the district's systemic racism. There are examples of that black excellence speaking tonight and other examples that have presented to you before. We in the black community have always had the solutions to our educational challenges, but often, we've lacked the resources and power to do what's right. When we do have the support from the district, you have examples like Kairos PDX, POIC, and SCI that clearly show what success for black children can look like. The Jefferson High School example, black student graduation rates exceeding the district's graduation rates for white students is an obvious, clear example. Exactly what Portland Public Schools says it wants to achieve. No achievement gap between white students and students of color. So we understand that adopting a racial equity policy 10 years ago did not move the needle for black students. So in today's climate, we know that saying it is simply not enough. We absolutely must do it. Portland Public Schools by itself has no history to suggest it can get the job done for black students. But together, and let me say that again, but together, within this resolution that outlines a true partnership between Portland Public Schools, the black community, and successful, proven black organizations, we can create an environment of support and leadership that will create a true culture of success. Success not only for black students, but for all students that are touched by love, by respect, and high expectations that must exist for each and every student. So tonight, I gladly support this bond with the Center for Black Excellence, recognizing that the community has been doing its part for years and is ready to go. For this school board representing decades of disappointment in the black community to now have this amazing, amazing opportunity to create, support, and directly impact the success of black children and families is an unbelievable moment in time. Unbelievable moment in time, one that we must, must take advantage of. You cannot change the district's past, but as board members, you can surely provide the light and pathway for a more equitable future. So like Joe and others, I say, please, vote yes on this. It could help provide an opportunity truly for all of us to breathe. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Bradshaw, is there any other public comment on this?
Not on this resolution.
Right. Is there any board discussion on this resolution?
Yes, I have a couple of things. I'm just sitting here kind of stunned by the incredibly inspiring words of our community partners and to honor and acknowledge what Mr. Hobson was just saying about how so many of you have been doing this work for so long and have the resources in the community to fulfill the dream that we all want for our black students. And now here we are able to invest. So just incredible gratitude to you, to Mr. McFerrin, to Lakeitha Elliott for her role as a parent activist, to Michael Alexander for just always showing up at different times, always keeping an eye on this board in the school district and looking out for the kids and importantly, our black students. It's incredibly inspiring, and especially because this is a collaborative effort and because our vision for a Center for Black Student Excellence not only isn't realized, but it's not even fully imagined yet. It's a glimmer and a dream that we're going to build together. So I'm just a little stunned and deeply grateful for all of you and for my colleagues for bringing this forward as well. And now, to be a total downer, actually, I have just one tiny little, little picky piece on this resolution, which is actually in the recitals, and I think we could handle this through a friendly amendment. But in the last recital, it says the proposed bond would allocate up to $371 million to modernize Jefferson High School, and will launch the design and implementation of the Center for Black Student Excellence, et cetera. And just to be, to be consistent, nowhere else in any of our bond language or our options have we referred to that number in aggregate, the estimate for Jefferson High School and the Center for Black Student Excellence. And so I think I wouldn't want to inadvertently somehow take away from what we are earmarking for the Center for Black Excellence, should there be any budget issues with Jefferson High School. So I think... So I think in order to just make the language more consistent, if we just remove the word "will", so it reads would allocate up to $371 million to modernize Jefferson High School and launch the design and implementation. Because at least to my mind, it looks like those could be read as two separate efforts. So if everyone will humor me with that friendly amendment, it makes me a little more comfortable that it's more in alignment with how we refer to this proposal elsewhere.
All right, I'm gonna check in. Sorry. I was gonna check in with Liz to see if that was kosher.
Hearing no objection, I think we can deem that approved on a friendly amendment basis.
Excellent. And I apologize for the language I just used was inappropriate. So if it was clear that that was okay. Is there any further discussion on this resolution?
So this is Director Brim Edwards. And this is a reflection on both the center, but also the Jefferson High School component of the bond. And as a long, I haven't been around quite as long as Mr. Hobson, but almost. I've been engaged with PPS since 1966. And I was very moved listening to the director of the past read the words of the resolution because we have a lot to reflect on as a school district. And we have a lot of ways in which we have really done damage to the black community in Portland as an institution. And I think tonight, I think it's two big steps. We have many other things we need to do. But I think one of the things that I want to acknowledge is the student voice over the last 10 years in 2011, when the bond failed, when Jefferson was in it, and then the next year when they didn't, weren't in the bond. It would have been easy for community members to have just given up on PPS, but students consistently use their voice to speak to what they felt, what was needed for them to be successful. And having met with students over the last five years, I know one of the things they very clearly said was the condition of Jefferson High School really was a reflection, they felt a reflection on how, what the community felt about them because the condition of the school building was so poor and that if we wouldn't want that for our own children, why should that be okay for the students of Jefferson? And so I think, I want to thank the students for really holding adults accountable. And I want to thank Tony and all the other members of the community who consistently have shown up because they shouldn't have to, to hold the board accountable for doing the right thing. And I do know that we have an opportunity to really make a difference tonight. And again, it's not everything, but I think the students, the staff, Jefferson and their community partners have done their piece, and now it's time for us to do ours. So I'm really excited this is in the bond package and I know our community is as well.
Thank you, Director Brim Edwards. Any further discussion? All right, the board will now vote on Resolution Number 6150, Resolution Supporting Centering Black Student Excellence in Portland. All in favor, please indicate by saying yes.
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 All opposed, please indicate by saying no. Are there any abstentions? Resolution 6150 is approved by a vote of seven to zero with Student Representative Shu voting.
Yes.
Excellent. The board will now bring forward Resolution Number 6151, A Resolution of Portland Public Schools, Multnomah County School District, Number 1J, Multnomah County, Oregon, calling a measure election to submit to the electors of the district the question of authorizing $1,208 million of general obligation bonds and providing for related matters. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Okay.
Director Brim Edwards moves, and Director Constance Sam seconds the motion to adopt Resolution 6151. Ms. Bradshaw, is there any public comment on Resolution 6151?
Yes, we have Mike Rosen.
Mr. Rosen, are you... There, I saw you earlier. Great.
I'm gonna get one of those T-shirts that says, "You're on mute."
It looks like you're unmuted now, Mr. Rosen.
Okay, great. So good evening, or good late into the night, Board Chair Lowry, Board Directors and Superintendent Guerrero. I'm Mike Rosen, last name R O S E N. And I'm very excited about the 2020 bond proposal and very appreciative of the scope, particularly the health, safety, and accessibility portions. We started this work in 2015 through the Health, Safety, and Accessibility Committee, which I chaired. And we recognize this as a long-term commitment, and seeing the board continue this investment is critical. As a parent of three Cleveland High School graduates, I appreciate the investment in Cleveland High School and Wilson High School. And then finally, the investment in Jefferson High School's Center for Black Excellence is critical in these times and absolutely necessary. Right now, I represent the Board of the Northwest Down syndrome Association and All Born In. We're an organization and nonprofit with a very wide reach in the disability community. Our annual, and we're up to 16 years, our annual All Born In Conference attracts 600 people. Our Facebook page exceeds 5,000 families, and our influence is national. And as such, we feel ourselves to be an important ally and resource for PPS. A PPS $16 million investment in making every school's first floor accessible is historic and to be celebrated. Combined with other accessibility investments, this is a total investment of over $30 million. This, I believe, represents a nationally unique commitment. It's important to keep in mind that we can achieve total ADA compliance for another $60 million. And our hope is that this work will be completed in the 2024 bond. Finally, I want to acknowledge the intersectionality of ADA issues with race and thank PPS staff for recognizing this. I look forward to more racial equity and social justice discussions in the area of ADA rights and goal setting. And then in closing, I want to thank Amy Constam and Julia Brim Edwards for their strong and independent leadership on this issue. We wouldn't have achieved this historic investment without you. And then finally, I want to be the first person in history to toast you with my ice cold Corona beer. Mmm, refreshing. Thank you.
Thank you, Mike. Ms. Bradshaw, is there further public comment?
No, that concludes public comment.
All right, is there any board discussion on this resolution? All right, the board will now vote on...
Can I just say one thing?
Yeah.
I'll keep it brief. This is, a number of us have been involved in bond work since the world was sludge, it feels like. And this bond package really is extraordinarily responsive to the world historical moment that we're in, to PPS's responsibilities that we have long neglected. It's a balanced package. It is going to result in both long-term and immediate benefits to students. And I'm proud to ask my vote in favor of this. I think this is hugely exciting for Portland Public Schools. Thank you.
All right, are we ready to vote? It's very exciting. I'm super excited. The board will now vote on Resolution Number 6151, A Resolution of Portland Public Schools, Multnomah County School District, Number 1J, Multnomah County, Oregon, calling a measure election to submit to the electors of the district the question of authorizing $1,208 million of general obligation bonds and providing for related matters. All in favor, please indicate by saying yes.
Yes.
Yeah, I think someone's unmuted. Doing a lot of moving in the background. All right. All opposed, please say no. Are there any abstentions? All right, Resolution 6151 is approved by a vote of seven to zero with Student Representative Shu voting.
Yes.
All right, thank you, members. I would like to ask Director Brim Edwards, who will be leading the bond campaign, to briefly speak to the path forward for the bond measure.
Great. Thank you, Director Lowry, or Chair Lowry. You know, it's been a long process, and we can't wrap up this agenda item without the board giving our appreciation and thanks to the staff for really all the work you did to help us design this package. Also, I want to thank the School Bond Improvement Committee Chair Scott, the committee members and the board members for all the work they did around this this package that really is going to, I think, inspire and serve our students well. And thanking the community members who spoke so eloquently tonight in support of the referral. As we know, it wasn't a straight path. Half, we started building this bond package last year. We continued through the onset of that pandemic and then the recession, followed by a national reckoning with racial justice. And we made adjustments in the package throughout that time. And again, I appreciate the work that the staff did because we've positioned ourselves that the campaign is ready to take the baton handoff. We're making the right investments at the right time. So with the reduction of the referral tonight, the next step will be to launch the bond campaign. We have less than 100 days, but we'll have a strong and diverse campaign team and campaign effort. It's a challenging economic time for Portlanders. We need to acknowledge that. This isn't going to be easy. Voters are going to be thoughtful about decisions they make. But we've consistently, we consistently heard, and I think we're well-positioned as we head into the campaign, that our community wanted us to go big and be bold. And I believe we've done that, but we've also been judicious in how we're doing that and thoughtful. The campaign, we'll be sharing more information in the next couple of weeks. We're already on Twitter, you know, have Twitter handles and Instagram and Facebook. We're at YesPDXSchools. Again, it's YesPDXSchools. It's the same name as the website. We've engaged a campaign team that has won the last two PPS bond and levies campaign, and we're looking forward to working with students, parents, community members, board members to get this across the finish line. So I guess I'll just close out this chapter of the referral work and move into the campaign, maybe reflecting on Mr. Hobson's words that we have an amazing opportunity and it's an unbelievable moment in time. So let's go do it.
All right, that deserves a dance break, I think. Let's take a six-minute break. You'll hear some tunes from the 2016 Cleveland High School Play-A-Thon while we take a stretch break and maybe do some celebratory dancing for the referral of the bond.
Director Lowry, just one thing I'd like to add to Director Brim Edwards' statement, Chair Lowry, is first of all, thank you, Julia, for volunteering to lead this effort for the bond campaign. It's going to be interesting campaigning in the virtual mode, but just like the public engagement that we talked about that helped us build this package, I know that we can do it. And also, you know, reflecting on the strong support that we heard from the community and testimony tonight that we've been hearing through the, from the community as we've been considering the different elements to comprise this bond, this is going to be all hands on deck. We need our parent leaders across the district. We need our community leaders who share our same values around creating a Center for Black Student Excellence and all the other aspects of this work that are so important. So this is just a call to our whole city. Step up. These are our schools. This is our effort. We need your help, and we have to realize this vision that we have for our district right now.
Definitely. Thank you, Director Constam. All right, we'll see you back here in four minutes at 9:50. Enjoy. All right, we'll see you back here in four minutes at 9:50. Enjoy.
2022, as part of that process, we outlined a set of academic milestones that we intended to progress, monitor ourselves against, and hold ourselves accountable to achieving those outcomes for, for our students. Our plan originally was to come back to you this fall with those initial metrics to inform our progress to date. But as you know, this past spring, we found ourselves navigating a new reality as a result of COVID-19. So instead of administering end-of-year annual assessments, we had to change course and implement distance learning for the remainder of the year. So just to lend a little bit more context, which really what this is this evening is more informational, I've asked Dr. Russell Brown, our Chief of Systems Performance, to, to provide an initial update. So Russ?
Thank you, and I'm waiting for someone to pull up the PowerPoint for me. Perfect. Get started here. And while that's going on, I'd like to take a moment, a privilege, just to say, really feel honored to be part of this organization and with this board's leadership. I believe I just listened to what I consider to be a historic vote. And for me, having been here, oh, we can back up with you. Having been here about a year now, you know, reflecting back over where we've come and our, sort of our continued commitment to and investment to our Black and Indigenous students is something that I, I'm really proud to be a part of and honored that I have a chance to speak this evening. With that, I know it's late, so I will go through this quickly. It is really truly meant to be an informational item and a reaffirmation of our commitment to our goals for our students. So if we could, next slide, please. Again, today, I just want to remind the board and community what those goals are. Want to talk a little bit about the context. I'll expand a little upon what Superintendent Guerrero had mentioned. And then I want to talk about the data availability. So what we expected to have last year and what we expect to have this year is just the context and again, information for our work around these goals as we move forward. Next slide, please. Yeah, as you've heard us speak during the course of the year, we've talked about our theory of action, our commitment to our Black and Indigenous students. And the notion here is that we, we wanted to have high expectations for all our students. And we wanted to set goals that incentivized closing achievement gaps and that differential growth that's necessary, that some kids are going to have to cover more academic ground to catch up. And what does that look like and how can we move forward with that? And then that commitment to a continuous improvement cycle, that as we move forward, we continuously look at the data and revise. Given our context, I think we have to look at our data and revise. So next slide, please. All of which was centered on our graduate portrait. And our, our goals and the board goals as, as laid out act as a ladder to this fulfilling this vision of the graduate portrait. And so if we go to the next slide, please. The first of those goals focused on third grade reading. And it acknowledged that there's not only an achievement gap between our Black and Native students and their white counterparts, but there's also a growth gap. And if we're ever going to close the achievement gap, then we have to accelerate growth for our students. And really, third grade reading at the end of third grade, it's one of those gatekeepers. It's that transition point from students learning to read to reading to learn. And it's an incredibly important skill as we move forward and remains so. Next slide, please. Likewise, in fifth grade, there are some foundational math skills that are incredibly important, too. And again, it's important to accelerate the growth of Black and Indigenous students so that we can close those achievement gaps that have been persistent, but to close them over time and requires, again, acceleration of growth. All of that builds towards eighth grade, which is the next slide. And the objective for eighth grade really was more of a summative goal. And the objective here is, can we ensure that our students are better prepared to enter high school so that they can pursue pathways towards post-secondary readiness? And again, laid out on a way to, to move kids forward through this. And again, now moving forward to the, the high school goes, the post-secondary readiness. Next slide, please. Again, a racially explicit goal that talks about closing the gaps between opportunity for our Black and Indigenous students versus, versus their white counterparts in terms of post-secondary readiness. One of the things I, I again, was really pleased about with this, this board and its leadership last year was this acknowledgement that graduation, while it's an incredibly important step in a student's life, while it literally doubles a student's income earning potential in their lifetime, it's necessary but not sufficient. You need those additional post-secondary readiness attributes. And we've heard students today talking about how important it is to, to be able to pursue AP pathways as they move forward. So those were the goals that were laid out at, at the start of the year, adopted by the board in October. I shared those with some of my colleagues around the country. Many of my peers would love to have boards that were bold enough to adopt racially explicit goals that, that target student growth and achievement in the way that this board has. And moving forward. And then COVID happened. And as the superintendent pointed out, it was, you know, it's really an unprecedented challenge to the educational system across the country. Certainly, PPS isn't immune to that. And as the superintendent pointed out, all the assessment activities in the spring were canceled either by the state or the federal government or even locally. And so some of the data that we had planned on having, as you mentioned, simply wasn't available at this year. Add to that, research has been done, which suggests that, that the growth that would be expected, typically expected in academic year, likely didn't happen. And I think that's not going to be a surprise to anyone. Early research on that said that essentially kids' reading growth last year might only be two-thirds of what would normally be expected. In math, it might only be half. So we're in a very different space than what, where we wanted to be at the, at the end of this year. And I think it really argues for setting a new baseline. It isn't to say that the goals aren't important. The goals, I think, are incredibly important and well-stated. But we are clearly in a very different space moving forward. So let's look forward and let's look at what data is available or will be available in the coming year. For grades three and five, we expect to, to have a fall testing window. We, we have even piloted a remote assessment. And we expect that we're going to be able to do remote assessment in the fall here. And I think it's going to be incredibly important for our families, our students and our teachers to have that baseline information to understand where our students are starting and to begin to plan to, to close those achievement gaps during the course of the year. We anticipate having a winter window. And then in the spring, depending on what, what happens in terms of availability of state assessment, we could either do NWA or the state assessment at the end for grades three and five as we move forward. Going on to grade eight, again, last year, the state assessment window didn't, didn't happen in the spring. We anticipate a March through June window this year with data that would be available in September of, of the coming year. And then finally, going on to, to high school, where I see a typo and I'll apologize for that. Seems like we all have a slip here or there. There are two graduation windows, not testing windows, one in June and one in August. But the data for, for graduation really isn't finalized till January. And that involves the resolution of, of the cohorts and where students finish their academic career. So as we look forward this year, we, we anticipate to have more data and a more complete data picture for our students in grades three, five, eight, and, and also with our, our seniors at graduation. And, you know, we, we're putting into place, again, I think you heard much earlier in the evening, again, the plan for assessment to help drive instruction and, and drive the instructional plan as we move forward. Last slide, please. So again, with COVID, with the interruption that we've seen, it's an unprecedented challenge. And so while I think the goals, as stated, make a lot of sense, I think we really need to look at our annual targets and our baseline, where are we starting? Because we're starting in a very, very different place. And I don't think anyone, and if they tell you they're confident in this, I'm not sure what they're basing on. Anyone's confident of what growth will look like under a, under this environment. So we, I think, really do need to get, gather new baseline data. And so I think the other piece that at least a couple of you had raised is, is, you know, wanting to know more about the availability of data and the timeline. So, you know, clearly not all the goals fall on the same timeline. Some of them, we have early data in terms of the baseline for grades three and five. We'll have mid-year data for grade three and five, as, as well as some projections for grade eight. We'll have some mid-year data around the graduation post-secondary readiness. But then when you come around to the end of the year, some of that data, particularly the state assessment data, isn't available until, till the fall. And so data will come at different points during the course of the year. The graduation data, again, doesn't come till January. So as we look at this data over time, I think we'll have to set a reporting schedule where we come back and talk about the different board goals over time. And we can revisit what we've learned before, but we need to understand that the goals don't all, the data for the goals isn't all available at the same time. And I think we're now around to questions, if you have them. And I appreciate your, your patience this evening. That was a long information item at the end.
All right, let's do alphabetical question asking again to make sure everybody gets a chance to weigh in. And we'll go in alphabetical order this time. So Director Bailey, do you have any questions for Dr. Brown?
I'm going to pass at this moment. I may come back around with one, but I'll let others go first.
Director Brim Edwards, do you have a question? Julia, you're still muted.
I was saying, I don't have a question, but I do have a request for a future discussion. This is something just building off of last year. As we, I think that we had just started this process right, sort of mid-year, right when the office was being stood up. But the request I would have is that we've, this year, built out the dashboard so that we have both growth and proficiency, so we can see where we're heading. I completely support, support growth as a measurement, but I also see, think it's like in somewhat without context. And the other piece is, at the end of last year, we didn't get any of this, disagg, the, the data on the high school measurements of what the CTE and the various other indicators. And that's a piece that I'd like to have built out. I am very supportive of the, a reset and acknowledging that we're in a very unique time. But I also think now is an opportunity to build out this sort of baseline dashboard so that it actually, so for our community, it, they can see both the growth and proficiency and they'll be on the same journey as we are. So.
Thank you.
Director DePasse?
I don't have any questions at this time.
Director Konstam?
Thank you. So one of, one of my questions that I shelved from the earlier presentation on reopening was for Dr. Valentino around his comments around assessment and really being able to focus at the beginning of the year on learning loss because of remote learning and, and inevitable summer slides. So I think, Dr. Brown, I will be interested to see when we do these assessments at the beginning of the year. I hope that we, we put it in the context of our mid-year MAPS assessment from last year. And I think, you, you know, I know that part of our curriculum planning is building in refresh of proficiency standards from the prior grade to try to get a sense, and correct me if I'm wrong, Dr. Valentino, to try to get a sense of, you know, where those kids were and where they are now. So I, I just will, aside from our, our march toward proficiency, toward proficiency, I'll be interested to have the conversation in the context of just the COVID slide as well.
Yeah, I, I think we're all very interested in where our students are starting. And I, I think that baseline information is incredibly important for the purposes of planning. And I'm, I'm sorry, Dr. Valentino, I think I just spoke over you.
No, I was actually just going to acknowledge the fact that you've been spending a great deal of time thinking about that. And we've had a couple of conversations in different configurations to think about how was it that we're going to be comparing, because we're not comparing apples to oranges, but that we're actually measuring in the right way. As, as Julia indicated, the growth and the proficiency, right, over, over that period of time in an authentic way. Because one of the, one of, one of the things you need to be able to say is that the assessment is really not just the system need for data, but the need to actually be able to track each individual student in, in, in the way that actually will allow us to adjust our content, but also to help features pivot to practices needed.
My question continues to be about our middle school portfolio and how we're moving towards that, the steps we're taking. And I know with school looking differently than we had planned, that that might be delayed. But again, want to just continue to move forward on that portfolio because I think, again, it is a historic way of measuring student success and really offers a lot of opportunities for students to demonstrate leadership and those attributes of the portraits. So is there any additional information on the portfolio at this point?
I, I do not have any additional information on the portfolio at this point. I have to admit that we have been very busy trying to plan for what, what fall can look like.
Director Lowry?
So, go ahead, Dr. Valentino.
So, yes, so what I wanted to, that, we did slow down a bit because we needed to refocus, as, as Russ indicated. But we have been maintaining the focus on three components and we've integrated the three so that it actually helps. Inside of our middle school redesign effort is project-based learning and our portfolios. One, so that it actually focuses on the middle school and that we are able to identify not only a, a service provider for the portfolios, but that we're able to use it and integrate it into, part of, part of our reentry is to begin to identify practices that we can build off of as we think about the middle school redesign entry for the following year with Calog, for example, or any other pilot school. And so where, while we did slow down a bit, as, as Dr. Brown indicated, we're, we're still maintaining the focus on that. And we are still looking at possible partners for both of those areas.
I did have one follow-up question, just to make sure I fully understood everything you said, Dr. Brown. Are, are we going to be doing MAPS testing this year or is it going to be different assessments?
We will be doing map, map assessments this year.
Okay, so we will be doing that in those testing windows that you indicated.
Yes. How does that work? How does that work?
Yes.
So the map assessment's a computer adaptive, as you guys are aware. And that allows us to be able to, to do it remotely if need be. Again, we did a pilot of that with one of our schools this past spring. Learned a lot from that, was very appreciative of that. And we've got some guidance for our schools in terms of how to communicate with parents about expectations in terms of the testing environment. You know, it, it should, again, it, it can be performed You know, it should, again, it can be performed on a Chromebook, so there's no reason that that can't happen, so there's no additional IT requirement. We're going on to a single sign-on environment, should be easier for students to pass through. That being said, it is a new environment, so I think we do have to look at the data when we get it and look for anomalies. And I would say, you know, when we see exceptions to the data, then, you know, we have to contextualize it with student performance. In other areas, you know, how are kids doing on their homework? How are they doing on unit assessments? It has to be part of a constellation of information for our students. We won't be the only folks doing that. Our partners at NWA have spent quite a bit of time thinking about what it would mean to be able to do that as well. So I believe it can be done successfully, or I wouldn't recommend it.
Director Moore, do you have any questions?
So I'm going to be uncharacteristically Pollyanna-ish and build off your question, Chair Laurie. And this is more in the spirit of a comment than a question. There is much that has happened related to COVID, most of it not good. But there may be a tiny little silver lining here, because one of the things we were wanting to move towards for the eighth-grade assessment was using portfolios. And so much of the distance learning is going to be, is going to, of necessity, require students to do some portfolio-like work, that this might be a stepping stone. And I think you already mentioned that. So a little glimmer of good news in the midst of a lot of bad. I did have one question, and that is about the high school metric. Because when we originally developed that metric, we didn't really take into consideration the timing, the timing of the high school graduation-related measures. And I'm wondering if you would recommend that we revisit a high school metric with the possible revision of what we want to be using as an annual metric? Because otherwise, it's going to be, unless we use the mid-year MAP results for seniors as well, it's going to be a lagging indicator by a year, right? So what would be a recommendation there, if any?
So I think that the metric is fine. The data, the final data for it's not available until January. I think the challenge with that is, you know, when it's interwoven with the superintendent's evaluation. And so I guess I would say, let's think about decoupling those two things, and how would we wish to decouple that, and what, because I think the metric as written really captures the essence of what we're trying to do with the Portrait of Grad. And so I would be reluctant to move away from that. But let's talk about what we could base it on, and that I think could be a mid-year progress measure, much like we did this year.
Director Scott, do you have any questions?
No, not a question, just a comment. I appreciate the information and the reframing. I think with all performance management, it evolves over time, both the measures evolve as well as the targets. And, you know, we have to do this all the time with normal events, sort of taking a revisit. COVID's not, a pandemic is not a normal event, and so sort of recognizing that. And, you know, I think, I don't want to, and you're not suggesting this, so I should appreciate it as well. We don't want to lose any of this data. I think we need to measure where we are, and even if our students have significant backsliding as a result of this, we need to measure that and be clear about it. But I'm also really comfortable with the uncertainty for a little while about targets, until we have a sense of what that new baseline is and what the impact is. Because this is not obviously impacting just our students, it's impacting students throughout the nation and the world. So anyway, appreciate the reframing. Thank you for the information.
Thank you, Director Scott. Student Representative Shu, do you have any questions?
No, I don't think so.
Director Constan, it looked like you had something else to add.
Thank you very much. So, you know, when we originally put together our board goals, we had a lot of conversation about trying to have some kind of metric around social-emotional learning. And I think we finally decided that maybe we can build it into the middle school one, or we just don't know what the right metric would be, and so we let go of that. But I know that there's a lot of thoughtful planning going on right now with our remote curriculum and our protocols and our professional development, specifically around social-emotional learning, because we know that in addition to proficiency and learning targets, like a huge, important part of this giant experiment that we're in is making sure that the adults in our system are making sure that our kids are okay. And so I feel like it's hard, but maybe there's an opportunity for us here to revisit that, because there's a huge amount of focus on it, given the new delivery model. And so maybe we can come up with some kind of board metric that tells us how we're doing in that respect. I would like to revisit that.
All right. Is there any further comment or question for Dr. Brown?
Yeah, just, this is Director Bailey. Just want to say, I had thought that there was at least some discussion about not doing MAP this coming year. In any case, I want to echo Director Scott's comments that I'm glad we're doing it. I think it'll give us a consistent measure, and again, as a data geek, help us measure what the backslide was. I think that's important going forward, as we continue to have conversations both with our state legislators and our congressional representatives about the needs of education going forward. And having data points like that could really help in moving those discussions forward. So I'm glad for that. I'm glad that we'll continue to have kind of a consistent baseline measurement going forward.
All right, thank you very much, Dr. Brown, for your presentation tonight. We are about an hour behind schedule right now, so I wanted to take a quick moment and see if you all, the board members, wanted to continue tonight with our 10 o'clock scheduled meeting, which was an executive session. So I'm just going to poll the board. We can move it to another night, if you would like, or we can go ahead and go forward with it. Director Bailey, what would you like to do?
I would like to unmute first, and it's past my bedtime.
All right, Director Brim Edwards?
It's not past my bedtime, but I think there's a mercy rule for everybody else, because I have a lot of questions.
Right. Director DePass?
I would be in favor of stopping early, or not early, but not.
Director Constan?
Prefer, please. Till next time. Or first by email, and then questions by.
Director Moore?
I think we should start all meetings at 10 p.m., but I'm willing to let this go. Yeah, I'm good either way.
Director Scott?
I was undecided until Julia said she had a lot of questions. I said, let's put it off.
All right. And Student Representative Shu, because you don't come to executive sessions, I'm not going to ask your opinion. It sounds like we are going to defer for another time. Nathaniel, I'm sure you would want us to all keep meeting, because you don't have to come to the meeting, so, yeah. All right, well, we are going to move on to committee reports. Sorry, accidentally muted myself. I think our first report is from Director Brim Edwards. Do you have a report for tonight?
Hold on. Yes. So the audit committee met, I think, about three to four weeks ago now. We were supposed to have a report the last meeting. We received the first audit from our internal performance auditors. It was on the contracts for PPS, and they had a number of findings. They were appreciative of the cooperation and work with the district staff. They have, the audit has been posted, there were a number of findings and recommendations. Given everything that's happening with, ordinarily, there'd be a fairly tight window on the turnaround from staff on responding and building out a plan based on the findings and the recommendations. Given everything else that's happening with the reopening of school and the bond, we set a date of October 1st of when that next piece of work will be done. We also received an update on the second audit that the auditors are working on, which is the ACH audit. As everybody will recall, we had a fraudulent transaction. Staff asked that the, we put this back on the district audit plan, we've done that, so that is underway. In addition, given the, it's the end of the year and the cycle, and the board has the responsibility of, because the independent internal performance auditors report to the board, there'll be the performance review of the internal auditor through the audit committee. And I want to thank Director DePass for doing, taking the lead on that, and that will be coming to be delivered to the rest of the board shortly. Again, thank you for Director DePass. I know she put a significant amount of work in that. And then the last piece was basically looking at the audit plan for this next upcoming year, and that will be completed probably in the next three or four weeks. Not the audit plan, I'm sorry, the audit committee's plan.
All right, thank you. Director Moore, do you have any reports to give?
I'm sorry. Are you talking to me?
No, I'm talking to Rita, but she's muted.
I do have another report.
Oh, I'm sorry.
If you, do you want me to, it's very short. It's on the.
Yeah, give your other report, and then we'll go to Rita.
Okay, it's very short. It's on the Rose Quarter iFive project. As most people may have read in news reports, based on a number of factors that some community groups and elected leaders have decided not to participate in the project, and the executive's advisory committee, and there was a discussion with board leadership in June about PPS's position. We're in somewhat a different position than the rest of, than some of the other community members and the elected leaders, in that PPS never endorsed the project, so there's not a need to step away. And in fact, if we want to stay engaged and actually have the state and ODOT address the issues we've raised around Harriet Tubman and the Blanchard site, that one of the ways we can do that is staying at the table. So there's a two-month break for, just the summer break when the committee's not meeting, but it's going to start meeting again in September. And the early discussions have been that this needs to have a solution that's greater than ODOT. They don't have the resources, nor the mandate to actually address some of the things that PPS needs. So in working with Courtney Westling and others, we'll be looking at other ways in which we can either bring other partners to the table, or the resources to the table to address the issues that PPS has for that specific project.
Any more reports, Director Brim Edwards?
No, I'm done, thank you.
All right, now I can let Director Moore give any reports she might have.
Just really quick. The policy committee will be meeting on August 3rd. We're going to be kind of looking ahead to the upcoming work for this year. One item that I know we'll be talking about, well, two items. We're going to be talking about developing a protocol, protocols around communication related to upcoming policies. So not waiting till the end, but kind of putting community outreach upfront and developing kind of protocols and timetables so that we all know what to expect. And the second item that I know we'll be talking about is a look back on how the complaint process has been working over the last two years. We're at the two-year mark after very substantial revisions to the complaint policy in 2018. So we'll be getting, the full board will be getting a report, an annual report on the complaint process, and the policy committee will be looking at that, and then getting any recommendations from staff or community members about any room for improvement in the policy. That's all.
Director Scott, do you have any report to give?
No, only that there is a body accountability committee meeting tomorrow night for any interested board members, and then we are not having another bond improvement committee meeting until, I believe it's August 13th.
All right, I have one additional piece of business to discuss, and it's kind of exciting. Director Moore has been invited to serve as a member of a state team formed to apply for a grant presented by the CDC and the Association of University Centers on Disabilities that would fund a 12-month project to promote early identification of children with developmental delays, screening, referral, and implementation of services. If the grant application is successful, Director Moore would continue to serve on the advisory team. Director Moore, would you like to provide any more info about the grant application or the anticipated work if it is accepted?
Just a little bit. So as you mentioned, this grant is part of a lodger's CDC effort to improve the well-being of children with developmental delays by improving systems for screening, referral, and provision of timely services. The specific project is intended to engage with parents and caregivers to identify barriers to appropriate care that have been revealed or exacerbated by the COVID-19 crisis, and then developing strategies to overcome those barriers. So I'll be part of an advisory team that's composed of representatives from across the very broad spectrum of systems, agencies, nonprofit organizations that make up the early childhood system in Oregon. And it's, I think we have a good, I think we have a good chance of getting this grant, and it could make for some important changes to benefit families and children. Thank you.
I think this is an important opportunity for us to be able to drive some investment into this much-needed area. Are there any questions from the rest of the board for Director Moore?
Congratulations.
Yeah, sounds like a great opportunity.
Congratulations.
I also have a question, how this work will differ from the work that already happens in the Head Start programs, where there's some, you know, targeted identification of kids, you know, they do hearing screenings, site, in our Head Start programs?
So Head Start is part of this advisory committee, this advisory team, and this project in particular is going to focus on Latinx families, parents and caregivers, because especially, probably in particular migrant families. because especially, probably in particular migrant families who have been extraordinarily hard-hit by the COVID crisis. So it's, Head Start, there's a list of about 20 agencies that are part of this advisory team. So.
Is this happening, is this happening then at the Head Start level? Or is it kindergarten?
No, this is for young children. So this is preschool, pre-kindergarten.
Pre-kindergarten.
It's, you know, three, four, basically three and four-year-olds.
The start age, yeah.
But potentially, ideally, we're looking, ideally, we would want an early childhood system that would identify any kinds of developmental delays as early as possible. So the actual age range that we're looking at is zero to five. Because the earlier you can identify developmental delays, and the quicker that you can provide appropriate supports and services, the more likely that the child will not suffer, you know, ill effects, that you'll be able to provide supports to, for appropriate interventions for the developmental delays. So that's, I mean, the focus, the focus is going to be on trying to improve the preventive systems and intervention systems, and in particular, focus on Latinx families. Thank you.
Well, hearing all of your congratulations to Director Moore, I consider the board to have agreed that Director Moore will fulfill this role on the grant application and, if funded, the advisory team. Congratulations, Rita. All right. Is there any other business tonight before we adjourn? Director Bailey?
Yep. Yeah, yeah. Very quickly, I sat in on a Benson Work Group meeting. As you know, where Benson will, in anticipation of the bond passing, thinking optimistically here, Benson will move to the Marshall campus while that school is rebuilt. Work has already started on the main Marshall building to accommodate them. There's another small building that will be built for CDE space for the program. That building was coming in a bit over budget, so our staff went to work and trimmed out basically nonessential, non-classroom space to slightly shrink the footprint of the building. So now it's back on budget. Great work, staff. Secondly, I just got to tour the Madison site, construction site, again, wearing properly masked and social distance with a couple of our architects and one of our staff people from OSM, Jesse. That's, again, that construction is on a tight timeline, but still on pace to open up in a year. It's going to be great. And again, the timeline wouldn't be so tight except for delays from the city of Portland in the permitting process that were head-scratcher, frankly. The other slight issue that's impacted the timeline is COVID. And the day after I was there, and thank you, Dan, again, for the courtesy call, an ironworker tested positive nowhere near where we were, and actually isolated from a lot of the other workers in terms of where their workspace was. But again, there's still some cushion there for some potential delays like that. But it's going to be a great building. Finally, talking to the architects, you know, kind of like, what are the lessons learned from this? And the architects were unanimous. If we can build a new building as opposed to remodeling, things go a lot smoother. That's been a real challenge on that side. That's all. Thanks.
Thank you, Director Bailey. All right. I think that brings us to a close. The next meeting of the board will be held August 11th at 6:00 PM. And this meeting is now officially adjourned. Only 40 minutes past time. Have a good night, everybody.
Thanks so much.